Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting minutes from January 29th.
Motion to approve the minutes?
All those in favor, oh, sorry. Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the community comment period. So similar to what I said, if you have something you'd like to speak about and you're here in person and it's not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your full name, address, and you got three minutes. When the light turns green, when it turns red, your time's up and we'll ask you to wrap it up. And then here for a community comment. All right. I think it's safe to move on. So now we have the public hearings. As mentioned, we have three of them. What to expect for a public hearing, if you're new and just tuning in. Similar process for each of these three, but when a developer, resident, or whoever submits a formal application to do something with their land that doesn't confine to the constraints of our ordinances, you have to apply for some sort of deviation from that and that triggers a 60-day rule. For the city to make a decision, Kerry and team do some research, put together a staff report, they send that to us for our review, and they use that to kind of inform this presentation you're about to see now. That includes some facts and findings that are relevant to it. We will then deliberate back and forth, or just question answers back and forth with the staff. Then we give the applicant a chance to give their own presentation, have a similar back and forth, and then we open it to the public hearing, which is your chance to tune in either remotely and testify, or if you're here in person, similar to the community comment, you have three minutes to do that. When we get through that, we close that, bring it back to the planning commission to deliberate and make a recommendation for approval or denial. And with that, we have our first public hearing. That's a variance request for 5205 Minnehaha Boulevard. Planner Teague, take it away.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So this property is mentioned is located on Minnehaha Boulevard on the east side of Minnehaha Creek, across the street from Arden Park, just south of 52nd. Note on this graphic that the site is unique with the curve in Minnehaha Boulevard. So the variance request is a front yard setback. The required front yard setback is based on the average of the two adjacent homes. This home to the north has about an 80-foot setback, and the home to the south is 40 feet. So it's a 60-foot front setback requirement for this lot. And with the road that comes in in this location brings the required setback way back on the lot. I have a graphic that shows that a little clearer coming up. But that, in a sense, is the request this evening. It's to tear down the existing home and rebuild a new house on the site. Also note that the homes on either side are relatively new, quite large for the site. Here's a look at the existing property. The existing house, note the setback is similar to the home to the north, and the applicant is proposing to utilize that same setback with the new house. Here is the proposed house. So all other code requirements are met with this site. The side yard setbacks, eight feet on the north, little over eight feet, seven feet on the south. That's based on the width of the property, which is 60 feet. So all other code requirements have been met. So when you put the 60-foot setback on the site, the front setback is basically roughly this red line. So you see the site's not buildable without a required front setback variance. Here's a look at the proposed home. Here is the proposed home in relation to the house to the north, and the house to the south is, you're looking straight east. Here's a look from the south, the new home to the south, and the proposed new home. So the primary issue is the variance criteria that we consider. The three main tests for the variance are the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner that's not permitted by the zoning ordinance. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances that are unique to the property and not created by the landowner, and if granted, wouldn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So staff believes that the findings are met here. The practical difficulty is caused by that unique configuration of the lot, that curved street, the existing location of the homes to the north that are set quite deep into the lot. The circumstances are unique to the property, not common to other R1 properties. This wasn't created by the landowner. The slot was originally platted with that curve, kind of runs with the creek to the west. Wouldn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, it's matching the existing setback of the house and the setback to the north. It's the same as the existing structure, and it's appropriate size and scale for this neighborhood. There are larger homes in this district, in this area. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. And I can answer any questions, and the applicant is here for a presentation as well.
Thank you, Kerry. I guess one thing to note, too, you know, zoning and setbacks have changed over time. So what was acceptable previously is no longer acceptable, which is kind of what you showed. The existing home would not be buildable where it currently stands per zoning today. Could you speak to, before open it to questions to the commissioners, how frequent this kind of variance request has been over the last couple of years, where we're like a unique lot around a curve with different setbacks?
Yeah, this curve is unique. I can't think of other circumstances, but that front yard setback where a home is set deep into the lot, we do run into that from time to time. Kind of the underlying, what the commission has generally done in the past, is approve those variances as long as it's consistent with the home that was there previously and not encroaching closer to the street.
Great, thank you. Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Hill, Kerry?
Director Teague, on the tree survey assessment, there's two berr oaks that are not protected because of the condition of the tree. Whose assessments of those trees are those? Is that the arborist, or is that the applicant?
I believe that's the applicant. Maybe we can ask him to address that.
All right.
But kind of big picture with the trees, this is subject to the tree preservation ordinance, different section of the code, but should this be approved when they come in for building permit? If they're taking down trees, they have to replace them if they're outside of the building pad itself and the new driveway. Then that's reviewed and approved by the city foresters at the time of a building permit.
Okay, so that's not something we need to decide on tonight, that's separate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seen none. Welcome the applicant or team to dock it here, and then just if you got a quick presentation or just want to stand for questions, leave it up to you.
I want to say hello. So good evening. My name is Fossa Shai. I'm here with my daughter Elise and my builder from Great Neighborhoods, Scott Bueson. My wife is traveling today and she's actually watching online as well. So Sarah and I bought our first home in Edina in 2005 on Long Lake Trail, and we moved to Edina to give the opportunity for our daughters to attend Normandale, the school to learn French. Our kids went to the Edina High School, and I really prepared them well to go to college. Elise graduated from university in Denver in psychology, and she's currently applying for graduate school for clinical psychology. Margot is at Sandhoff and studying for environmental studies. Sarah and I have been active members of the community, have been coaching hockey. Sarah was coaching soccer, participated in scouts, Girl Scouts, school activities. We actually hosted two Normandals interns as well. After we became anti-nester, Sarah and I started looking for a new home that offers walkability to shopping and restaurants, and we wanted a home that has space for entertainment and also support our families as we grow. My daughters are growing as well. Our search for homes included proximity to lakes and walking paths, and our first home that we actually home was on Minnehaha Parkway in Minneapolis. So when we saw the house in Arden Park, Minnehaha Boulevard, it felt like we came back full circle. We purchased the property in October 2024, and it's our intent to replace the existing home with a new home where we can live the next 20-plus years. The property is located on Minnehaha Boulevard, takes a sharp 90-degree turn around the property, and because of the curve, we have a front setback issue that we need to take care of. So our plan for the new home is to have an open concept design with a lot of windows to bring the park into the home as well. The look is going to be a one-and-a-half story to make it look part of the property as well and the neighborhood. The new home is aligned in the exact same location as the existing home, except we're moving away from the house a little bit. So this distance between the two houses will be a little bit longer and would be right with the current right-side neighbors. Our goal is to build a house that would fit the lot and the neighborhood. We've also been proactive in seeking for feedback. We met with Chris Auker on December 26th to get our feedback, and we incorporated that into our plan. Scott met at a neighborhood meeting as well in January 26th to get feedback from the community, and also met separately with both our agents and neighbors, the London's and Ingalls, to provide information about our project and get their feedback. And Sarah also met one of our neighbor, Carol Burnett, who's also a friend of one of our friends as well. So we're excited about the next chapter of our life. We want to thank you for your time today, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your story and the thorough process and transparency of it. Any questions from commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Padilla?
You mentioned that you met with the neighbors. What kind of input did the neighbors give you, and what was their feedback?
Yeah, I met with the neighbors. We didn't have a huge turnout. It was basically, they knew there was some development coming there. They had questions about where the setbacks were from the house. I followed up with Ingalls, who's the house to the north, and he asked how close the house was to his house. I said, well, currently, the existing house is four feet away, and we're going to be about eight feet away. So we approved the setback there. So they were happy about that. I did send it out to all, I sent the elevations you saw in a letter to all neighbors within 300 feet of the property.
And was that the only feedback that you got?
Yeah, I didn't get a lot of feedback, but we did communicate to everybody, followed up with phone calls to the adjacent neighbors.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. So this is a public hearing, so that is the part of this. So we will open it to a public hearing. We'll put some of the info up on the screen for those who'd like to call in. Can read through it quick. I don't really have it. Anyways, we'll wait till it comes up on the screen. But while we wait, for those who are in person that would like to testify, you can come up to either podium. You have three minutes to do so. State your full name, address, and when the light turns green, go. And then when it's red, we'll ask you to wrap it up. Is anyone here in person that would like to testify? All right. Can we get that back on the screen? So for those who are tuning in remotely, please call the following number, 312-535-8110. Enter access code 2861-0723508. Then enter password 5454 and press star three to indicate you're ready to speak. So since there's a lag here, we'll give it about a minute to catch up, and if no one's in the queue, we'll close the public hearing. We're still working on elevator music, so just bear with us.
Seeing no one has joined, I believe it is safe to proceed.
I welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. Take it back to the planning commission to deliberate on this one. Anyone got anything? Motion?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the variance request.
You have comments first?
I was just going to make one. Comment, it's not the current homeowner's issue, but it obviously seems like the original plat was probably done incorrectly for this size of lot. It should have gone the other way, north-south, but obviously they were facing the Minnehaha Creek, and that was the point. So I really have no issues with this or improving the neighborhood, and it's, you know, it's setback about as far as you can go. So that's my comment.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Just quickly, we approve these setback variances quite often for residential lots that are not standard or not typical. So this is unusual for the planning commission to see and approve. So I agree with it.
Thanks. Suppose we'd welcome a motion down there.
Motion to approve the setback variance.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next public hearing. Appreciate the thorough detail and transparency with the process with the prior applicants. It helps things go very smooth. All right, this next one we have is a conditional use permit, site plan, and building height variance for 7001 York Avenue South, and this is the site of the Southdale Library and future potentially Art Center. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. The request tonight is for an updated conditional use permit, a site plan, and a building height variance for the county library and art center at 7,001 York Avenue. The subject site is 7.75 acres and is located at the southeast corner of York and 70th Street West. The site is guided as community activity center and is zoned R1 single dwelling unit district. Hennepin County is proposing to tear down the existing 76,000 square foot regional library and 38,000 square foot service center to construct a new 43,000 square foot library and 16,000 square foot art center on the north half of the site. The Edina Art Center would be a tenant in the proposed building. The south half of the site would include wetlands and green space with sidewalks and bike paths through the site to connect to the regional bike trail through Adams Hill Park to the south. The green space on the south half of the site would include space for support activities for the art center and for the library. As I said, the request tonight includes or requires a conditional use permit, a site plan, and a building height variance. Publicly owned civic institutions such as libraries are conditionally permitted uses in the R1 zoning district, and the city code outlines that a conditional use permit should not be granted unless certain conditions are met. And in this case, staff believes that all conditions to grant a conditional use permit have been met. The project will not have an adverse impact on government facilities, utilities, or services. In this case, the total square footage of the project is less than what exists today at the library site. The current site is roughly 112,000 square feet, and the proposed library and art center is roughly 59,000 square feet. The project will not generate additional traffic on the streets serving the property. A traffic study was completed for this project and found that the existing roadways would support the library, or I should say, continue to support a library at the site. There's not an adverse impact on the public health, safety, or welfare, and the use of the property remains the same as a library. The proposed project would not enhance the property and fits well on the site. The project would not impede normal development on surrounding properties. The project conforms to the zoning code with the exception of building height, which we'll get to in a little bit, and the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Public libraries are conditionally permitted use in the R1 zoning district, and land uses in the community activity center in the comprehensive plan include institutional and recreational uses. As stated, the proposed project also meets the requirements of the city zoning ordinance with the exception of building height. The proposed building meets all the city setback requirements, and there is a decrease in both building coverage and impervious surface coverage on the lot with the proposed project. The site has vehicle access from 70th Street, and the existing access off of York Avenue is proposed to be closed with this project. The building has pedestrian access from the north, south, and east sides of the building, and trails connect through the site to Adams Hill Park to the south. A sidewalk connection is also proposed along the south side of the property for connectivity. The code requires 160 parking stalls for this project, and the site plan shows a total of 184 parking spaces. Of those 184, 109 are surface parking stalls that are located on the surface lot along 70th Street, and 75 of those parking stalls are located underground. A parking study was completed, and the existing library and the existing art center were studied for peak parking demands, and based on those findings, 184 proposed spots are expected to accommodate those forecasted peak parking demands for those sites. The proposed landscaping on-site is relatively extensive but does not meet the tree replacement ordinance of the city's code. The tree replacement ordinance is located outside of the zoning ordinance. It's located in Chapter 10, so therefore, there's not a path to request or receive a variance from the tree ordinance requirements. So the city forester reviewed the proposed plans and believes that there are some options that can be considered, so the tree ordinance is met. There's a few options. One of those would be to preserve more trees on-site or transplant the trees on-site, so they don't have to be mitigated. They could also pay the escrow or obtain a letter of credit for the valuation of the escrow to meet the requirements of the ordinance. The tree ordinance also allows for the planting, or off-site planting of trees within the boundaries of Edina. So staff recommends that as a condition of approval with the project, the applicant will work with the city forester, so the tree ordinance is met prior to the issuance of a building permit for the site. The proposed building materials are aluminum and metal panels with large windows. The site is unique in that it's located in the greater Southdale District but is zoned R1 single dwelling unit district. The R1 district does not have building material requirements or transparency requirements that other zoning districts do in the greater Southdale area. The requested variance tonight is for building height of the proposed structure. The zoning district would allow a structure that is three stories and 40 feet in height, and the proposed structure is two stories and 59 feet in height, and that 59 feet is measured from average existing grade of the library site today. Staff believes that the proposed variance for building height is justified. The variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the code. The intent of the code is not to provide uniformity in building height in this area. The site is not located within a traditional R1 area surrounded by single-family homes. All surrounding properties within Edina are commercial or office uses that allow for taller buildings. The closest structure to the structure is the structure to the south, which is 52 feet in height, which is similar to the proposed height of the building. Other nearby buildings include the Weston, Yorktown Continental Apartments, and the Bauer Building. The applicant also noted that due to site grading and how the site is situated, the applicant has said that the library will also appear to a height of roughly 26 feet from the residences to the east that are located in Richfield. The proposed variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan doesn't regulate building height, but the site is located within the community activity center, which is the area in Edina that allows for the most height and density. There are practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance. The variance is reasonable given the location of the subject property, and there are other buildings in the area that are taller than the proposed library, and the height of the existing library that exists today is 60 feet. The circumstances of the subject property are unique and are not created by the landowner, and the proposed height variance would not alter the character of the neighborhood. There are existing buildings in the area that are taller than the proposed building, and like I said, the existing structure is around 60 feet. So tonight, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend city council approve the conditional use permit, site plan, and building height variance for 7,001 York Avenue. The project meets the conditional use permit standards. The proposed project meets the criteria to grant a variance. The height of the structure is consistent with other buildings in the area. The existing height of the library is 60 feet, and the proposed project will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Staff also recommends the conditions that are outlined in the staff report, including the requirement to meet the city's tree ordinance prior to the issuance of a building permit. With that, I can stand for any questions, and I know there's representatives from Hennepin County and from MSR Design that will give a short presentation as well.
Thank you, Emily. Commissioner Hahnemann?
With the tree ordinance, it's not specified where the trees need to be planted. Is that correct?
For the specific locations?
Just, you were saying that you could plant the required trees off-site elsewhere in Edina?
It would be on Hennepin County-owned land, so he would work, or Hennepin County would work with our forester on those locations, or specific locations. That would be approved by him.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Emily? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for your presentation. This is a very exciting location and project. Just a couple of questions. I believe this site is R1 zoning. I think you mentioned something to do with the fenestration is outside of R1 zoning. Could you talk a bit more about that?
Other zoning districts in the Southdale District require, not fenestration, but require, there's transparency requirements. So the R1 zoning district does not have those requirements.
Okay. I know in the packet, I think the applicant had to interpret what 75% meant in general, you know, with the Southdale guidelines, right? We always want 75% fenestration, right? And it could be interpreted as potentially a length of 75% of the facade of the building or an area. How does the city think about fenestration in general? Because it would seem then that the language is a little bit vague and open to interpretation. How would you narrow that down? Or how does the city think about fenestration on a facade?
In this project that wasn't considered, because it's not a requirement, but Kerry, do you want to talk on other instances?
Yeah, certainly. So yeah, again, this is a unique situation with the zoning here being R1, yet still located in the greater Southdale District. Adjacent commercial properties would be required building material requirement, you know, brick and stone, especially on that first level. And then the other is the transparency requirement. 75% of the building we want to be able to see through. And the way we have calculated that is really just taking the length of the building at eye level, and if that area has windows, so taking the width, total width, and the area that's transparent into the building, kind of at that eye level, first level. It is one thing that we have talked about in the past, cleaning that language up when we do our zoning, our amendment to the zoning ordinance. It's one section that we'll want to clear up for the commercial zoning districts.
So Kerry, are you saying even though it's not required, they're following the design guidelines and tree, they're following the design guidelines of other commercial properties in the Southdale District, but we're holding them to the residential standard of trees?
Yeah, that's the unique thing here. They don't have to follow those commercial guidelines because of the residential zoning on the site. The flip side of that is because it's zoned R1, they are subject to the tree preservation ordinance. If we were establishing or requiring the commercial requirements for landscaping, it would well exceed our commercial standards for, and that's really based on you need to plant one over-story tree per every 40 feet of perimeter around the site, and they've far exceeded that with the number of trees that are planting, and there's a variety of sizes that go along with that as well. So it's a unique situation here that we're applying residential standards for trees and residential standards for the building materials. We're not applying commercial standards for building materials.
Isn't the whole visibility of the glasses in that part of the Southdale District for?
Not in this zoning district.
Not in this one? Not in this one?
Right, but we're holding-
Not in, on this site. It's, those standards don't apply to property that's zoned R1.
Right, but they are more or less complying with them as-
With the ex- yes, with the exception of the part of the wall that faces Seventieth Street. But on the York side, yes. And really the, the site that faces the south to the pond.
Thank you, thank you, Dark Satiege. Just a few more questions here. So it also seems too that the tree, just a quick question, what's a fair, a fair-conditioned tree? And I, you may not know this, right? This might be a forester question, right? So I guess we could, will we ever get like the forester to share with us any insight on his decisioning on if this site would meet the tree ordinance requirement or not? Is that ever going to be a thing that we will get to review or even discuss, or is that outside of our purview at this time?
I mean, he reviewed the proposed project and provided comments to staff, so he's, he's reviewed this project and is working with the applicant, and he will continue to work with the applicant. Are you asking for specifics on this project, or just in general, are you interested in speaking with the forester?
Yeah, because typically I think we would, in the past, I think, weigh in to some degree on the trees and the preservation of trees, but this seems a little bit different where the forester would work directly with staff and the applicant to make that decision, so that, that may be something that's outside of what we would look at.
Yeah, the zoning, the tree preservation ordinance is outs- located outside of the zoning ordinance, so it's not overseen by the planning mission.
One more question for now. Sidney, love the green space there that's being proposed. In terms of management, how does the management work with this site between the city, between Hennepin County? Who's managing that green space? I'm, I'm just curious about that.
I'll let the applicant speak to that, but I know they are working with the Parks Department to work through those decisions, and who's managing what portions of the property.
Gotcha.
So that's an ongoing discussion, I believe.
Okay. All right, that's it for now, thank you.
Commissioner Hahnemann.
Just a quick one, thanks for the presentation. Do you, I apologize if it was in there, but do you know when the current library was built?
Seventy-one.
Okay, so that's fifty-
And then the, I believe the service center was seventy-three.
That's fifty-some years ago, we've had a sixty-foot building in that spot. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I guess I just have one final one, because it seems to be at the root of maybe some of our feedback during the sketch plan review process too, just about how, you know, this area is guided in the comprehensive plan for a community activity center, something far more robust than what we're seeing, yet it's zoned R1. So, and it seems like some of the feedback, as well as something like McJohnson's review and others, you know, like, we want to hold this site because it's in the Grandview District to some of those principles, right? But you're saying it doesn't necessarily need to be bound to that because it's R1? I guess I'm just having an issue with that, I guess, contradiction. So I just want to know if staff could speak to that a little bit.
Sure, I can. So the Greater Southdale Design Experience Guidelines was created with the intention of it being a tool as the city considers really rezoning and comprehensive plan changes within the district. That would be the tool to help justify that type of development. We did not take it a step further and put specific requirements into the city code. We did some, like the transparency requirement in the commercial districts and building materials, things like that, so we have moved some of those standards into, to the zoning, but that was the intent of the, of those Design Experience Guidelines. Some of the things within those guidelines, they have incorporated. We talk about little pocket parks, parks within the Greater Southdale District. We're getting a pretty large green space and, you know, very similar to park space that's available for residents to walk around the pond, go through with the bike connection with the trail to the, to the south. So, and they've also pulled the building up closer to the street on, on the York side. Granted, there is the surface parking lot in front that we're trying to, to get away from, but some of those principles within the Experience Guidelines, they have followed.
Yeah, I guess why I ask is just historically, it seems like anything that's redeveloped, you know, like, we have that as a tool, and we have a review process that's in place, you know, to hold any redevelopment, even if, if it's not rezoning or comprehensive plan amendment, you know, it's like, it is used if there's physical changes, if there's a change to a property, and with there being that kind of, let's just say disparity between the comprehensive plan and the zoning, like, it, it just seems awkward and maybe not well-advised to not try to apply that to this property since it's in that zone. So, I mean, that's just kind of what most of our feedback was kind of grounded in a year and a half ago, November of twenty-three, so just trying to understand some of the context behind that. And I see what you're saying, but maybe I, I disagree a little bit, so. I don't know if other commissioners had questions around that, or we can talk about it later. Thank you, and we will welcome the applicant team to the podium. Just introduce yourselves, give us a rundown of what we're seeing, what's changed, and why we should support this.
Hello again, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Liz Viderico, I am the Project Manager in the Design and Construction Division in Hennepin County. I'm joined here with-
Good evening, Commissioners. Glad to be here tonight, I'm Matthew Kuntrod, I'm a Principal Architect with MSR Design.
And we're the two presenting, but of course, we have quite a few of us from Hennepin County and also MSR Design as well. I'm going to start us off with sharing the Hennepin County Library Mission. It is to inspire, facilitate, and celebrate lifelong learning. One of the ways for us to achieve this mission is by creating inviting, inclusive, accessible, and safe public spaces. You'll start to see that theme throughout this presentation. As noted, the facility was built in nineteen seventy-one, so for decades have been serving various different residents from Bloomington, Richfield, Minneapolis, and Edina. This project, since twenty fifteen-ish, has been in some type of process, including moving out the county service center and the courts. And what you can see here is the current path that we're on was started in early twenty-twenty-three. So throughout those years, we've been connecting through our community through surveys, outreaches, and various different community engagements. Ones of notes were the last two, that both had just under a hundred attendees. One was at the end of twenty-twenty-three, and one was at the end of twenty-twenty-four. We also hosted an open house last month, which actually had quite a few of our adjacent neighbors just off Xerxes. This brings us to today, as you can see here, we've been in a long haul of design, we're in the refinement period. You may have noticed that the entire facility is currently closed now, so it may be a little quiet on the outside, but I can ensure that there's bustle on the inside. We are at the size of this facility, being very attentive in the salvaging and the repurposing of various different furniture fixtures, materials, and then also being careful in the deconstruction process before we hand that over to our construction manager at risk to do the demolition and then head into construction. That will then bring us to the completion, move-in, and then the opening at late twenty-twenty-seven. All right, so getting into that feedback from the community engagements and the open house. Some key common themes are accessibility, bikeable, green space, natural light, comfortable seating, and technology, and the list goes on. We use this to provide effective services through our design. Some features, of course, not limited to, is street access, street level access, which we'll touch on, on direct sidewalks and trails, better utilization of space, more meeting rooms, better access to technology, extended time for holds pickups, of course, access to our tenant, the Edina Arts Center, and then partnering with the Three Rivers Park District. We are embracing an opportunity to improve accessibility, strengthen our programming and partnerships, provide green space, and showcase true sustainable design. Okay. All right, I'm gonna, we're gonna zoom out quickly, and just notice how the site design contributes to filling in the gap to promote connections to the civic infrastructures and green spaces in both Edina and Richfield. I also want to acknowledge that there's also partnership between the City of Edina and the Three Rivers Districts to make that final connection, that multimodal, that will promote multiple ways of transportation, not only to our site but those surroundings. So I'm going to hand it over to Matthew now with MSR Design to share more details on the design and how transformational this project can be for our community.
Again, thank you for the time this evening. There's a tremendous amount of people standing behind us that have worked to get to this point and have a conversation, and I'm going to do my best to represent the county, the people that we've engaged, and the design team that's brought forward what you're going to see here, and hopefully it'll shed a little bit more light on some of the conversation that staff was presenting earlier, and some of the strategies and the reasons why we, we are where we are. But again, looking at the context, what we're, what we're really driving towards is a, a series of connectivity, making sure that every step of the way, this is a very accessible library and arts center, along with providing amenity for the community. So when we talk and look at the graphics here, it's really based on providing transparency, accessibility, multimodal, and ensuring that you can get to the front door very easily, you know where you're going, and wayfinding is built in on top of all the other things. So when we look at what we're really strategizing here, is this site was a quarry, it was a gravel pit. Many people that we've engaged with have talked about their youth engaging in the landscape, but it has been really engineered over time. Our current condition is basically impervious and has remained there for sixty years, right? The new proposal really tries to tuck the building to the northwest, have the scale at the York side, and then reduce scale towards the neighborhoods to the east. So we're pushing almost a catty corner, opposite of the existing structure. We also want to keep that scale and edge condition right at the corner there of Seventieth and York. The rest of the site is developed mainly as green space, so we're really flipping it that's on its head, and managing water, thinking about the future in terms of climate change and the things that we're seeing, where most of it's runoff now, and then we're managing it. You'll see some images here shortly that talk about how we're dealing with that. So that transformation into absorptive surfaces and experiences, along with the connections that Liz talked about earlier, to the community. Performative-driven design, on top of just the site, the orientation and siting is really about driving full sustainability. So we have nearly daylight, a hundred percent daylight autonomy, driving towards allowing daylight as, in lieu of electrified light, and then the environmental reaction of shading in the summer, allowing solar gains in the winter, so that it's a high-efficiency system. So we have native landscape, we're absorbing rainfall and managed on the site, daylight spaces. We're also in building in healthy materials, removing toxins from the environment, and then low embodied carbon in the materials and a selection of those. So there's some CLT, which is cross-laminated timber, to carbon sequester as part of the structure, solar ray on the roof, as well as some mitigation of runoff through green roof and plantings, and then geothermal, geothermal heat pumps as well. What, what are we trying to do in terms of restoration? We're really trying to do a reparative landscape. So these images you're seeing are meant to portray how Minnesota landscape would have worked prior to all the engineering and things that have happened to it. So we're having these different biomes and ecosystems, all the way from marsh-type areas to wet prairie, onto oak savanna and openings. So our, our planting strategies are long-term and meant to endure time and thrive in this environment, as well as looking at things like the climate action plans that indicate what will be resilient in the future. So we're taking into account long-term. As you can imagine, the library that's here has been here sixty years, we plan for the same longevity and all the actions that we've put in place in the planning and design. So, you know, there's all these, you'll see these kind of thumbnails at the bottom from how the plantings operate and how they inspire, and also become educational opportunities for the public as they engage in them. What does that look like? There's a whole series of these and how they work, they will fill in over time. We've got a strategy in planting that will allow it to kind of be robust, but kind of make its way into a manageable and, like I said, thriving ecosystem. Storm watch management, this, it gives you a good glimpse of what we're planning. So the south part of the site, which maintains our ability to have daylight long-term, long into the future, as I mentioned earlier, allowing daylight and solar gains when we want them, rejecting them when we don't want them. But it also allows us to use the southern portion of the site as a national drainage area. There's a planned, a system of trails that kind of engage in it, but it really is a working system. So if you look at this, the typical water levels, they'll be to the southwest of the site, there'll be some standing water for a short, for most of the year, almost all the year. When we get to a two-year or twenty-four-hour storm, there'll be a two-point-eight-five-inch increase in that, so it'll start to fill in. And then for larger ten-year, four-point-two-six, you'll see how it's kind of fills in. As we get to a twenty-five-year storm, it'll hold water for about four days and slowly dissipate it into the system, so it doesn't overwhelm all at once, you don't get it at all in, in one rainstorm and then overwhelm the infrastructure. So it's managing that system, and then the plantings around it are really meant to help mitigate it as well and thrive in that environment. At a hundred years, then we have controlled delay outflow of a hundred years, and it helps reduce the demand on the municipal storm system. And so, you know, this is an image that shows what we intend in terms of this biodiversity and integration of a reparative landscape that is resilient and works with the environment, but also gives opportunities for learning education and integration of those trail systems that are accessible to the library. So looking at the site plan in a little bit more detail, we, as was mentioned earlier, our car entry location is the existing location on Seventieth Street near Xerxes, so it's the same location that you would normally enter. We're closing the entry that's on York Street. There's a drop-off area at the front door on the north. There's a surface parking that was mentioned, and this has some permeable nature to it, as well as plantings around it. The thing to note about this parking system is, when you're on the east side, you're looking over parking. So it's depressed into the landscape, and you're looking over it, and if you, there's some images later that if you're looking at it from the west, the, the landscape funnels to the door, and it really obscures it. So you're not, you're never looking at cars parked in a lot, you're either looking over it or through the landscape towards the front door, and you'll see that in some of the images. We've really worked hard to kind of integrate it into the landscape, and then prioritize walking paths, bike paths, and the total accessibility of the site. As was mentioned, a part of that strategy is to get a good proportion of it underground parking, so we use the entire footprint for underground parking to mitigate the amount that would be above ground. We have the solar and green roof, we have occupiable terrace on the south side, it's part of the public spaces, and then also the trailhead, which connects to the Nine Mile Creek as a partner. So very accessible in terms of how you can arrive, you can choose bus, bicycle, walking, as well as- as well as building into the systems. There's outdoor plazas and program areas, specifically to the south that tie into those connections, and that enables the library to do outdoor programming as well, so indoor programming for children's events, or whatever might be going on, book reading or something like that can happen on the southern plazas, and then that landscape is really tied in. What was mentioned earlier in that how we're connecting, we've connected at all four points, all four corners, and then the mid-block location's east to west, too. So if you came from Richfield, you have three points along the block that you can access the site very easily, and then, as you'll see here in a minute, they're all ADA. So it's very accessible in terms of getting to the front door, multiple front doors that we have that also express, which is shown in this diagram. So we have the mid-block joint connections that allow ease of access, and then all of them are ADA accessible that get you to a front door within the facility. We have a southern entry and a northern entry, and that northwest corner is highlighted as a key point coming to the front door in the north, and then you can make your way from multiple approaches from the south to the southern front door. Again, we've worked with a bus system to understand where bus stops would be and make those accessible and direct to. Some of the challenges, the dividing on the York Ave, so that the buses really need to stop in their current locations, and we've discussed where alternates could be as well. Again, mentioning, this is a diagram that shows you how the main entry for drive comes if you're coming from vehicle, that's a very intuitive direction, both into the parking garage below and the area above, which has the drop-offs, or 182 parking stalls, a little over that would be hard with the reductions, and it's split up in a manner that we described as 108 surface and 74 underground. If you look at the library itself, and you'll see in this, in some of the imagery, almost the entirety of the first floor is transparent. So if you look at the entry at the top, move to the west, which is the York side, that's nearly all 100% glass on the first floor, the west side is 100% glass, south side is 100% glass, and then a portion, as it starts to tuck into the hill, is transparent on the east side, too. So what you're seeing on the east is tucked into the hill, and we've managed the grade to make it minimize the impact on the east, which would reduce the feel and scale of the library on the east to around 27 feet to the roof. And then, as you can see, where I said you look over the parking, that's tucked down into the landscape where the book drop happens, and staff spaces are on that side. There's clear story above, letting daylight in and visual vision into the building. So if you were on 70th Street, you would look in through the clear story about eye level from the sidewalk, and you'd see the wood structure inside, the warm wood structure inside as the ceiling. So we've really kind of nestled it in and paid attention to the perspective as you go around. You'd enter from the north or the south into a very open space, there's a main atrium in the center, it's all open library, very accessible, and then there's some ways to navigate up into that atrium and onto the roof terrace on the second floor, which has the Edina Arts Center. Here's a view as you would look into, coming in from the north, you would see straight through to the south at the park, again, that's that 100% transparency on the south. Above is the roof terrace and Edina Arts Center inside of that, so very open and daylight. This is the children's space to the southeast, looking out into the park, and you can see, or the open space, green space, the grade would slope up to the left, and that goes up to the second floor, so it's nestled in on that side. It corrects a lot of what's existing on site where the heavy grade change on the east drops off very quickly and you can't navigate it, so you have to circulate around the entire block in order to get to the library. The second floor, just as an overview, there's both Edina Arts Center space, as well as meeting room space for the library and a reading balcony, all in this kind of central public core, as well as a planted terrace that looks over the south. All the water management comes off the roof through the terrace and as well into the site, again, trying to slow down and respond to the environmental change that's happening. There's a view looking out over that terrace from the inside, that seating grouping, and then looking back down towards that north entry that, off to the right, is where you would, the initial image showed. Again, we're, we have a clear story, in this image, you see the clear story off to the right, that is meant to bring north daylight into the library and the art studios. And so that's the bit that kind of goes over height there in the variance piece, and it's really a performative piece, which allows, if you've ever been to an art center, you know that north daylight is the best for what things you're doing. And so it's really developed both get it into the main library, again, minimize the electrification of light, but also enhance the overall quality of the studios and spaces that are in the overall facility. Here's an image looking, this would be looking south, you'd see some taller buildings there, but really focus here is the meant, as the amenity, as this kind of community terrace. This is, again, this is a view from the northwest, looking southeast, and this is what I mentioned, there's a landscape and everything pointing to the front door, parking is behind the landscape to the left, there's all the transparency that you see at that corner, moving to the west side, fully transparent, and that would wrap around to the south side. Again, you get the intent of the landscape and the plantings that we'd be intending to put in. This is looking, coming off of 70th towards the main front door on the south, and then parking in the drop-off to the left, you see the clear story on the upper level that would let daylight in, the upper of the roof, that's the kind of impact of the height that we're talking about. And then at the first level, the clear story windows that look in to the staff space. This is coming from Richfield's side on Xerxes, this is the children's outdoor plaza, there's a hillside that goes up to the art center kilns and that, and it's outdoor programming space, basically, and you can see the depth of space here that is more accessible than the current condition as outdoor space, it's a real reversal of the impenetrable hill that's currently in that location, and the building nestles into it as opposed to stands high from it. So the intent is there, and then we're hoping that it becomes the sledding hill in Edina. Paying attention to the full gamut of seasons as part of this kind of outdoor-indoor spaces. This is the south plaza, roughly where the bike trail, the trailhead would come through, just off to the right is the children's space, outdoor space, and inside is the children's space, and then you see the terrace balcony above. This is the south entry coming off the bike path, be just behind you would be the water management and landscape, and then just off left, the trailhead would connect to the northwest corner. Again, terrace on top, and then that transparency at the bottom, seeing directly into the full capacity of the library on the first level. This shows some different times of the day, and how that transparency works, as well as the engagement that's possible on the second level. So as a refresher here, you saw some of these slides, but we've kind of, we've paid attention to the existing structure and its height, the surrounding structures, and then worked to minimize its impact on the east through the way it works on site, and respecting the scale of the Richfield residential neighborhood through the way we've sited it towards the northwest and nestling it into the landscape and changing the grades around it. Again, just to give a little more context to this overlay diagram, the dashed drawing on the lower portion is an overlay of the existing structure, and then the blue line is really the new structure, the piece that pops up is that clear story, it's a smaller sloping surface that reaches up to that point. And again, reading balcony from behind, that's where that slope goes up to the, just screen right, is that's the highest point, whereas the lowest point just above the people here is where the existing condition is. So a little bit about materiality, we've worked with, again, nestling this in, trying to make a second floor, the material of the second floor is aluminum panel, and it has some fins on it that are meant to tune to the environment, so each facade, it shades the windows that are in it, and they're spaced in a way that reduces glare and enhances the interior daylight, as well as keep scale to it. So mainly, the first floor is almost basically transparent, with the exception of the area that is the staff area, where you have the upper level of glazing, and then the second floor has windows as well as the metal surfacing. This is the west facade, it has similar strategy to it with windows engaged into the metal panels, and then the south-facing terrace, which is almost basically 100% glazing behind the canopy, as that canopy shuts, it comes over. We have aluminum panels, and we have some perforated metal that allows daylight to be shaded, but also reflects light into the building. As we get to the south, it's predominantly glass on the south with the canopy shading it, so both second floor and first floor are full, floor-to-ceiling glass with mitigation of the solar sun through our canopy and overhangs. Again, same materials on the upper level. West, east facade, again, predominantly smaller facade because of the way we've managed the landscape, and same materials all the way around. So you can kind of see, it's a very limited palette, on the first floor, we do have some textured concrete, but the predominant piece is really the glass, and then the second floor is the metal panels with the fins. It's a muted palette, it's a kind of a champagne color, with shade and shadow really activating it as the intent. So you get a sense of what that's like from the far south, where we've made that connecting path, which would connect east to west on this very southern portion, and then connect into the main trails. That's my overview. I'd open it up now for questions and anything we can clarify.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Commissioner Padilla.
Thanks very much for your presentation. I'm not sure, Scott, if you had anything to do with previous, building of previous libraries, but I'm gonna start with kind of my orientation between homes that I lived in, Edina, I lived in Minneapolis, and I live near the Central Library. So my first question is, that has a green roof, and it sounds like you mentioned that there will be solar on the roof, and I understand all your water management and landscaping on the ground. Is the experience with the green roof at the Central Library not been favorable? Is there a reason that you chose not to do a similar type of thing?
As far as green roof everywhere?
Green roof on this, in this building?
Yeah, there are portions that we have green roof on the, on this proposed structure. We've managed between both, we think that there's an importance between solar energy generation on site and our ability to manage the water offload. We've done such a good job at managing water on site that green roof doesn't really create a net positive, meaning it would be extra, but we do, we are committed to it as a feature in this, and we have taken into account with Hennington County, their experience with it and how to manage it, so that's all been accounted for.
Okay, and I'm curious, the current library is 76,000 square feet, and this, the new one will be about 43,000. Are you losing bucks or just using space?
Yeah.
More wisely, I'm interested, it sounds like it's a reduction in.
I can say that library services, 60 years difference, library services are tremendously different, right? And you have different approaches to collection, where digital is part of it, but also efficiency in how libraries are planned and the services you can provide in this amount of space. It also had the government center in it, so there's.
One item on that is the service center, so each level had one.
Oh, so that includes, 71,000 includes.
Well, I'm sorry, the service desk. So we have multiple levels, which at that time of design had different service desks, well, now we're condensing, so there's a lot more efficiency in our overall design, and we're really emphasizing more the importance of some of the meeting rooms, and so taking a look at how can we really be smart with that.
Okay, and a tenant you mentioned will be the Art Center, does that represent a revenue opportunity for the county?
So we're in the conversations in the lease right now, and we do have that as part of the agreement in terms of the accommodation for reimbursement and then also future rent, so yes.
Is there not rent initially, or that's part of the plan?
It is part of the plan, yes.
There's a lot of work being done currently in the Adams Hill Park, does that have anything to do with this project?
We've been sensitive to that there is a gap in the connection for the trail there, and so we've done due diligence to make sure that we're positioned by any connections to it, or where we bump up against it, that it's ready and it can be tied into. And we know there's conversations about what that looks like and what the potential of it might be, so we've been very sensitive to being able to connect to it, because we think it's an important piece of the overall connectivity, not only to the site, but the region, and how people will come and go.
Could you explain, please, and this is a little bit getting into the weeds, you mentioned short-term bike parking and long-term bike parking, what are the differences?
Yeah, so with anything, you know, there's, we don't know how this is gonna operate, but you can imagine with it being on a trailhead and being a facility like a library, that we need a good amount of bike parking at the front door, so it's very convenient, which is what we're considering on the south, we also have it on the north, but that, you know, in essence would be short-term. We also have some bike parking that we're paying attention to, both public and staff, and encouraging bike use, so there are long-term bike parking in the basement as well, making sure that we're trying to cover as much as we can.
So is the difference only the location of where the bike racks are? That's the only difference between short-term and long-term?
Yeah, I think in this essence, you know, it's gonna be, front door is pretty short-term, people are gonna ride up and park and come on inside because it's so transparent.
Do you plan on having any EV stations?
There is EV stations planned and expansion as well, so in the parking garage, there is EV, yeah.
And the surface.
And surface, yeah, outside and inside.
And for all the transparency and everything, is there any issue with the light destroying the books or damaging the books?
That's mostly a concern when there's special collections, a lot of current circulation is popular materials and new materials, which wear out before light can actually damage them, but we do have, if you look at the south, this light is not direct light, and direct light is the most intensive for destroying materials. So refracted light that's coming in, and our process for working on the facade, so we also have frit on some of the glass, so that helps mitigate glare and reflect. light and as well, especially on the second floor, anything coming in has been bounced quite a few times.
And what Matt didn't share is that we're offsetting the shelves and keeping them perpendicular as well, the actual orientation.
Great. Last question. Also, from my experience living in Minneapolis, I learned a very valuable lesson about the role that libraries play. And it is far more than lending books in terms of what it does for the community. And it represents warmth and home and comfort for transient population. And I'm wondering how you plan on dealing with that. This is probably a question for you, Liz.
Well, yeah, please.
There's Scott.
Chair Commissioners, I'm Scott Dymstrow, Library Director for Hennepin County Library. And that's a fantastic question and it's one that doesn't just apply to the Southdale Library, it applies to all of our libraries. And the answer to that is we provide, as you said, warm welcoming spaces. And within those spaces, we welcome any individuals that come into those spaces and we work with them based on what their needs are. Are there needs to have a comfortable space? Are there needs to connect with a collection? Are there needs to connect with a staff members so they can get resources outside of the library as well too? So the Southdale Library with the space that it will have, with the meeting rooms that it will have, with the comfortable seating that it will have, with the outdoor space that it will have, provide the same services for individuals who are unhoused as also individuals who are housed and at a different stage in their life as well too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
You went through it briefly, but could you tell me a little bit more about the wayfinding, about how people can use different modes of transportation to come here? I noticed the bike racks on a couple of different places, like if you drive in, if you ride your bike in from the south with your child and.
Bixi?
Yeah, well, one of those little things on the back. Yeah, the little trailer, you know, and where do you park that and how do you get in? If you couldn't park it on the south side, have lunch and then walk in? Or if you do it from the north side? Or if you get off the bus, how do you come in? And also kind of like, how do you get to the kilns? All the ways that people are going to go in and out and.
Yeah, the, I'll go back to the plan here a little bit and walk through it. So what we've tried to do is eliminate the grade change from the east side. It's very abrupt. And so if you look at all these points of entry, especially along the Richfield side and then the north, east and north, or south, northwest and southwest corners, you can literally, that's all navigable grade that's AD accessible. So we've, at a baseline, we've provided that as an amenity and ease of access. So if you're pulling a trailer, it's not a heavy lift, you know? So you can come off of the trail or one of the sidewalks or even the neighborhood. And you could either come from the north along 70th to where the big arrows are and come right to the front door, right? Or you could come from the south and go to where the big arrow is and be right at the front door. And that as an entry space is front and center. So you come in the doors, you park your bike, lock it up or leave it if you feel all right and walk in, undo the stroller or whatever. And you get to that center point and that's where the service point is. You're looking at somebody that can help you or you're seeing the atrium or you're seeing the children's space. So it's all very intuitive because of the large open space that we've planned and then the positioning of the service counter to be able to almost operate the whole library with a couple of people at one location. All of our sightlines are open, so you can sit at the service desk and see almost every corner that you would want to see for the staff. And so that as a service perspective is vital because then librarians can do what they want and customers can find their way or know exactly where to go to get information. And so same being, if you came in a vehicle, being able to park downstairs in the garage, there's an elevator right there. We've designed it so that it's a beacon below basically and you know exactly where to go. You come up and you're right by that service point. So it's all been thought about in terms of those user experiences and making it direct because we all know we're kind of visually cluttered right now, you know? You get too much information on your phone and you can't pick things out. So we try to declutter it and make sure that that's a, from bicycle or walking, car, whatever, bus, right to the front door and then into the services. Sorry, I get excited. I'll keep talking if you don't cut me off.
And then so when you come in from the northeast, does it ramp slowly down to the front door?
Northeast, yeah, yeah. In that case, because it is so much higher, for reference, from the northwest to the northeast, I think it's 14 feet of grade change. So it, you can't, you'd have to have a switchback stair that kind of takes up the whole sight. And so we're relying, that's the most challenging corner, but we're relying on that really shallow grade, navigating that for a longer distance and then just a left turn right to the front door and it's very evident. And that's the drop-off plaza. So it's, we're separating cars and pedestrians in a very safe way. Anybody that, you know, works on a library knows that, you know, you've got a book drop where you want to drop off on the left, you've got passengers you want to drop off on the right, you've got bicycles, you've got people, that the most, the best thing you can do is try to kind of navigate those apart from each other and make it safe. And that's really, this whole north side is a ton of effort to get it safe and clear and accessible and that's what you're seeing here.
And spacious plazas too, so there's not going to be congestion when there is multiple, say, caretakers with various different equipment.
I'm assuming there's going to be some skaters on the.
We are working through various different site designs to help, you know, create a comfortable, safe, but then also, you know, risk management as well.
It's always a given, yeah.
And if you're coming in to go to the Arts Center, you go through the front and then take the elevator up or stairs up?
We've kept it all at a central entry point and it's managed so it can be after hours or we can manage hours. So if there's a disparate opening time, we can manage it safely.
Okay. And it seemed like this was, but the public can park below the building too.
Correct.
Okay. And where are the bus stops?
If you look on this, there's a bus stop about on the south, on York.
A third of the way.
Yeah, about a third of the way. And then there's one just across 70th. We have investigated changing them, but there's complexity in how the bus needs to drop people off and crossings where people might want to go across York. So in order to keep people safe, we're still kind of investigating it. But the current locations feel close and accessible and direct and safe.
At York, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. So if you look at the north here, there's a.
Bump out.
There's a bump out. We're talking about increasing that so it's a shorter distance to walk across.
Do you get across in time? Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I wanted to keep on the discussion now of public transportation and specifically bikes. There are a few different staff recommendations in the executive summary. I thought a lot of them were excellent and wanted to follow up on some of these and ask if you had considered them. So there was the first one about working with the city staff to ensure that, you know, any changes to street width adjacent to the site wouldn't preclude the future addition of bike lanes specifically along 70th. Have you been doing that?
Yeah, I was talking to the team earlier today and we do have capacity, I believe, in terms of what's been planned. Scott, do you have any other?
No, I'll say that we have had meetings and.
Okay, okay. The other one hidden here that I thought was great was, you know, to consider installing a canopy or shelter above the proposed surface bicycle parking. I didn't see that in the illustrations, but are you considering doing that?
I think overall, we are looking intent on what that south plaza is, not only with the bike kind of shade, but also, you know, all the other activities in that. So that's a mix of the trees, but then we are looking at different fixtures that we can apply. So at the time, we do not have necessarily something right over the bikes, but that's kind of overall can be looked at for sure.
Okay, okay. I may have missed it because there was a lot of information taken, but there was a recommendation about the long-term bicycle parking stalls in the underground parking facility. Is that being incorporated into that design?
We do have them. I don't remember how many.
Right.
Okay. All right, I think that's it. I mean, I think that, like I said, just to recap, those city staff recommendations, I thought were all excellent and I hope that you guys keep working with them to, you know, meet most of those recommendations as best as you can. Thanks.
Did I hear you say that the pond was only going to have a couple inches of water in it?
No, not a couple inches. You can kind of see the scope in that few images here of normal, if you can determine scale here, normal water level is, it's probably a couple feet deep.
Okay.
Oh, Britta's here. Where? Oh, maybe you could give a little more detail, yeah.
Hey, everyone. Britta Hanson from EOR. I'm on the design team, landscape architect. These are the permanent pools that will always have water in them except for extreme drought conditions. The pools are approximately eight feet deep, so they do hold a good amount of water.
Thank you for clarifying. And then, sorry to make you go back to that one slide we were just on with the bump out on the northwest corner. Currently, that is the largest concentration of heritage and protected trees that are coming out. It's quite a few there. And looking at the design, the building is so beautiful, that corner sort of feels unresolved and I just, I don't know if there's an opportunity to do something with public art or something amazing to really catch your eye, but it feels like a big sacrifice of those trees for what's looking like a large chunk of pavement for drop-off.
Yeah, point heard. We are continuing to look at it. I think managing the directness and accessibility, I mean, that's the thing that's driven it, but point heard.
And it might be a little deceiving with the bump out, so that whole northwest corner is meant to be a plaza inviting and along with that gesture of the building. So we realized that, you know, the original design of putting those trees, now granted, it's similar to the building, they've lived a long, long, happy life. And so it was a battle of, you know, addressing those grade changes, the connection to that major intersection and having those trees. So what we're trying to look at of other existing trees are the ones that are a little bit further south.
Yep.
And so that was kind of the balance that we had. But I know we do have opportunities for public art as well, so working through that avenue will definitely have opportunities. Where it is right, I'm going to be located, we're not quite sure yet.
And I just, I know you guys have done an amazing job navigating the site and that will be a central drop-off point. I didn't see in any of the renderings in our packet or that you went through, something that really grabbed my eye if I'm driving past it and want to know, hey, what's that? I want to look at that. So just something to consider, but really nice job.
Commissioner Alkire.
Thanks for the presentation. I guess the first thing I have to say is what a joy it is to live in a place that's investing in libraries. So thank you for your work on that. It's really exciting to see this come to our community and to the county. I think the one thing I wanted to ask about was parking. If I read the deck right, the peak demand in the study was 116 spots. The code requires 160 and we're delivering 184. So that's a pretty significant overage, so what's driving that?
We do know that you'll have, especially with a facility that has all these amenities, that you're going to have some pretty sizable events and we don't want to turn people away because those, sometimes those are their first experiences. And we felt that if we, the current plan for the north isn't extensive on grade and then we, with the amount below grade, that we could manage that amount and not keep people from coming to the facility. And so it's a bit of a negotiation, but especially when you have larger events that.
From both programs. I'll also recognize, you know, with EAC and their current facility, it's hard for us to forecast and we know that they're, you know, going to get a bigger and more audience and more participation. So I think in general, the numbers that we're using may not be, and because we aren't, we give what we currently have for our peaks and our current usage too. So we suspect that definitely going up. So balancing out the reductions, but also, one of the big community engagement feedback was to balance out the modes of transportation, including the parking.
Okay, I mean, I have a lot of empathy for the decisions that you have to make. However, I mean, it's just, you can't help but hear the planners of the Southdale parking lot saying the same thing 30 years ago or whenever that was. Well, we got to plan for Black Friday, which didn't exist then, but we got to. So when we see a peak demand of 116, your concern is that there's too much uncertainty in the model to really have confidence in 116.
I think we rely also on our knowledge of our user groups too and their, I know Edina Arts Center is putting out their business plan and so getting feedback based on their community engagement along with our community engagement. So I think it's well-educated decision-making and trying to balance out, you know, the need versus, you know, what some of the reductions that we were able to achieve.
Yeah, I mean, part of it, I mean, a certain amount of my question feels silly just because you look at the parcel and so much of it is green space that why is Alkire concerned about impermeable surface? But it's just a pet peeve. But thank you very much for your answer.
Yeah, I think we're all challenged with, I think I see a future where there's very little parking needed here. But we want to, you know, we want to have the lightest tread right now that we think is appropriate, that doesn't keep people away right now and then be prepared for the future. And so it really is, the water management, one is impervial, impervious, you know, reducing that and then making it a delightful place. And I think this is the oak grove on the north. It's meant to be that kind of oak stand in the future as it fills in and I think it'll be a delightful experience even with some paving. So trying to minimize the two.
And I should also say the before and after is a striking contrast. So good work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Alkire's, just helped him out with the parking initiative, although he did the majority of the work on that that we just presented to the City Council last week. Has it been considered at all by the county or I guess the project team that like after a period, let's say two, three years, whatever, you review what that capacity needed is? And then if you decide so forth that you don't need all those stalls, perhaps stalls along the far east side in the northeast corner could be, you know, removed, paved under, put green space there? Is there something, you know, you could potentially build into the project plan to have that parking review after a period of time?
But I think I'm encouraged that it's going to take more than a couple of years for us to really understand the ebb and flows of the facility too. So as we grow into the facility, as we see Edina Arts Center flourish with their new facility, and they're getting ceramics back, which is a huge demand in our society and our community, so I think it will take some time, but it's always a helpful lens to keep in mind.
Sure.
Thank you so much for the presentation. There's just a lot going on here and very exciting stuff, and I definitely appreciate Mrs. Liz, right, when you talked about the mission and the vision of Hennepin County and how much, you know, you look at the library today and what you guys are proposing is like night and day, right? With a huge focus on sustainability. And then you also shared that pie chart showing the amount of, you know, hardscape and then how that drastically changed with green space. I have a couple of questions that, I'll start from the outside in. Hopefully I'll be quick. So the first one really is just the sustainability of the green space on the outside. Very lovely, right? How much of this space, so I'll give you my question and I'll tell you what I'm thinking. So how much of this space has to be managed, right? Versus a space that's self-sustaining? So for example, in some spaces, you have to replant the plants, you have to cut the grass, you have to put fertilizer, you have to do things to keep it looking nice versus other spaces, you could just let it sit and naturally it kind of sustains itself, right? So that's kind of the idea. And along with that is, this is a very green space and a very urban environment, right? Typically, you see designs like this kind of pushing out, moving to these suburb areas as you kind of cross between suburban and like more rural, right? Where there's more open spaces. So I don't know if you guys have experienced this, right? Like you're driving today in Edina and you see like a bunch of turkeys crossing the street, right? And you got to slow down, right? And wait, or you might see ducks, or you might see turtles, right? I'm just curious about the management of this space and the potential wildlife that could exist here and how that would impact the surrounding area. So the overall question is sustainability of the green space and management of the green space.
Yeah. I would say, before I offer other input, I would say that we've had extensive conversations about what maintenance means, right? And how to measure, quantify, and plan for that. So Hennepin County has been integral in the decision-making, and how do we get to a point where it's a comfortable amount of management of it, understanding that we're asking ourselves to do things very differently, right? There's a tremendous amount of effort to go into if this was all golf course grass, that type of effort and the impacts on the environment are much different than what we're proposing, but it's different, and there's some activity that has to happen on that. I would say that I look forward to the biodiversity that's going to happen here. It's going to offer a great plethora of learning opportunities and just healthy engagement. So those things all come with a cost, like you're saying, I think, in some way, and being clear about that. Do you want to talk generally about the broader management?
Yeah. Great questions. And to speak to the wildlife impacts first, I would say that this green space will be a part of the patchwork of the park system of Edina. So you already have deer and turkey and turtles at Adams Hill Park and along the Greenway, and this will provide more green space for them to find habitat. The majority of the green space that you're seeing, especially around the wetland and on the east hillside, will be seeded with native seeds, and it will take, part of the contract of our contractors will be three to five years of intensive management to get a permanent stand of native vegetation that is resilient and really requires less maintenance than that if you compared it to just a, you know, a turf park space that you've got to mow weekly or twice a week, you've got to water, maybe some chemicals are applied. There's no chemicals that will be applied in this green space. There's no irrigation in this green space. Mowing would be a once-a-year activity in a majority of this space. You could introduce some controlled burning even if they wanted to do a more natural management approach with the appropriate professionals. So we have also designed the site as a gradient of management, so you have more manicured spaces close to the building that are also featuring native plants that provide habitat for pollinators and birds and the desirable species that we want to see. But as you move away from the building, it gets more natural, lower inputs, and less of that traditional landscape management approach.
So if I understand you correctly, the initial setup might be a little bit more intense, right? To get it to that sustainable level, much closer to the building, you have more management. As you push away, less management, but we're looking at easily a zero to five-year kind of time period for this thing to kind of mature and be a sustainable space. Is that fair to say?
Exactly. Yep.
Gotcha.
And that is built into our plans for construction to make sure that we are providing Hennepin County with a landscape that is mature and ready to be maintained in sort of a longer-term approach after the contractor is done.
When you talked about the water depth, I was going to ask about fishing, but I guess you answered that question. So my daughter, she currently goes to Edina Arts Center. She loves art. I think she's going to be an artist, I'm hoping. She was actually featured in Southdale for some drawings that she did with snow or something. And so I was speaking to Jeanette there, I think she's one of the staff members, and she walked me through the panel and all that, and the timelines that she talked about lines up with what you guys are saying. So it's great. I think we need it. Now, my daughter is like seven, right? They make a lot of noise. They scream, "Art is not just painting, art is banging things," right? You're putting banging kids in a library on the second floor, okay? And I'm trying to study on the first floor. So talk to me a little bit about noise management through the atrium, coming down, like how do you guys think about separating the two but still keeping them in the same space?
Yeah, that's a great question. The whole facility is being designed to be three standards, which is Minnesota's version of basically, if you know LEED, LEED Platinum. It has a very high standard and bar for many of the decisions we make. And part of that is STC rating and RRC rating. Those are two ratings that talk about sound transmission and everything associated with what you're talking about. And it's a really high bar, probably the highest we've seen in our practice right now. And so what that means is all the assemblies for the wall systems, the way they reach the ceiling, the way the floors assembled, has a really high resistance to allowing sound transfer. So that's all built in. And then the way we've planned it is to kind of compartmentalize into that zone on the second floor with good doorways and enclosure as well as the high volume in the space. So if you remember the images of the atrium, that has a perforated ceiling on it, the entire ceiling. It has a large cavity above it full of insulating material that will trap and collect sound as well as the volume. And then when you don't have parallel walls, it starts to help with that. So it's really tuned, and I could say that this is going to be the quietest library that we've done, even though the libraries are loud now, right? So I think we're in a really good place in terms of addressing that. At the same time, what a wonderful place to be able to come and make something, go down into the library and learn about it, and wayfind to learning and education. So I think, you know, I'm really looking forward to, you know, seeing what comes out of the first few days there.
Wonderful. I'll keep going and I'll hopefully wrap up here quickly. You know, normally when we look at building materials, it's usually standard housing materials, right? These materials are a little bit different. You have aluminum, which is metal, right? But aluminum oxidizes, so it doesn't rust. But then you have perforated metal on concrete. So as we think about this long-term, I'm thinking about rust. The perforated metal rusting causing rust streaks down concrete if it rains or if it snows. I'm not worried about the aluminum paneling. I think I'll be fine. But talk to me about the perforated metal, and do you have any concerns or long-term concerns with that material as outside material?
Oh, the canopy itself? Yeah. If I'm understanding which areas you're talking about. Yeah. Right. So it's in two locations, and this, it isn't associated with the concrete in any location, but I understand your point of like how it gets managed and that. So our coatings and all that are being developed in connection with our specifications and that, and we're managing water in a way that is meant to. So we've done this before in other locations. We don't have major concerns with anything as long as we specify and the finishes are applied according to the way we specify them in these locations. So the real only locations we're talking about is the kiln area, and we have to do that as part of the way the kiln operates and some of the off-gassing that happens with it. We want to make sure that it's managed, so there's that added layer of corrosion that we're resisting in our specifications and the way we're selecting it. And then the filtered light that comes through the canopy on the terrace side.
So you don't have any real concerns with the metal having rust issues? On the first image, it's on the inside. The second one, the champagne color, that seems like it might be on the outside, but you're not concerned about that at all?
No. We're not concerned with the specifications and the way we're providing the construction details.
All right. Last question, guys. Sorry.
Last thing we want is a resting area.
Yes.
Similar to what was mentioned, the longevity of our facilities are very important to us.
Yeah. So I'm sure you guys have been to Highland Hills, right? The ski lodge there. I frequent there too during the wintertime, and really tall, rough, big windows, similar kind of design. There's chairs along the window. That's like high-demand space, right?
Right.
The second you walk in there, everybody runs in there and they just grabs those spots. I'm just curious, and you know, of course, this could be resolved in the future, but just the placement of the chairs and everything, like, just talk to me a little bit more about how you guys think about who gets to sit by the window, who gets to sit more internally? How do you guys think through placement of stuff in there?
Well, definitely first come, first served, right? I mean, I'm going to have to arm wrestle for some of these seats because I think it's going to be very popular. But our strategy is mainly variety in seating and variety in diurnal experiences. So throughout the day, you're getting some areas that'll have a little bit more daylight, you'll have more filtered light in other locations, and then it'll change over the journey of the day. So you may have a favorite spot at 9:00 AM, but then when you come in in the evening, you're going to have a different favorite spot. And so that mix of variety in types of seating and variety of experience across the day or season, you know, allows you to kind of flex, so it isn't an argument over, that's my spot because that's where I always go. But you'll find that there's an ability to kind of move with your day, your month, your year, and the season. So that's what we find strategy-wise for planning libraries, because we know it works, we've seen it, and we see engagement in that. So barring, kind of controlling people and telling them, no, you take a ticket for that seat, we really try to design that in. And I think you're going to have several favorite spots, hopefully.
Thank you.
All right. I'll try to be somewhat brief, but thank you for your presentation tonight and for your time. Starting out on the northeast there, the entrance is where the existing entrance is to the site for main, most of the vehicular traffic. And then it does come down a pretty steep hill there, so it sounds like that still comes down a little bit and then levels out, and is where that parking level is. That entrance, while it's where the existing one is, seems very close to Xerxes. Was there consideration or moving it more mid-block or somewhere else on the site?
Yeah. We looked at several locations for in and out on that block, and we had some that were more west, and we were finding conflict with the Walgreens across the street and the confusion that could happen by having a location there. And as we studied it further, we found that, you know, the familiarity and I think the kind of cleanness of being able to try to get the west side as a one direction. If you look at this, there's a one-way on the west of the parking, and then there's only two-way going into the main garage, the below-grade garage, that this solution got you far enough away from 70th, so if you're, or from York, so if you're pulling off of that, it isn't going to be congestion and then the cross-traffic from across the street, and then allowing that kind of clean interior where you drop people off. That one-way is really important because, like I said earlier, we don't want to have vehicles going two directions, people walking across, bikes coming, all of that mixed up. So by focusing on it in the way we have, we've separated things, kept it to a minimum, and I think provided the most safe experience that you could have.
Thank you. Initially, I didn't see the bike facilities, but as we went through the renderings, I did see it both in the north and south, so that looks great. If you go back to that one that was the, that we're just on, showing the exterior.
One of these?
Yeah, a little bit further. It was, you saw the entrance to the, I guess, the parking, underground parking. It was the only, I don't know if we had it in our packet, I just missed it, but I'm assuming that's what that is. And, well, I guess you see it there. It looks like a separate structure. It was back on the, the building finishes and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Maybe the elevation. Yeah. Right.
It was from the east. It was looking north. That one.
Okay. Yeah.
See, it appears to be a separate structure out on the...
Yep.
Just kind of wondering what's involved with that? What is there? The thing I'm not seeing on the site plan is a dumpster collection or anything?
Let me, I'll tie both the north and south together for you. So that, to the left, is that same kiln structure. And so it sits above, on this side, above the entry into the parking garage. So right below that is the door for the parking garage. And there's a little bit of a gap between that kiln structure and the library itself. It's a different type of structure. It has that perforation because it needs the airflow and everything associated with it, and it has to be, you know, non-combustible and all the things associated with it. But then it sits up on that plaza that gives direct access to the students and that coming out. So when you look back at this side, it does feel like it's separate, but that's way in the back, and then there's that sloping surface that comes up from the children's area on top of it. So they're kind of integrated as a kind of joint series of elements, but not disparate in how they start to read as a part of the whole structure.
And the...
Oh, and the trash, yeah.
It's on the lower.
The trash is tucked under there as well. Just off to where you see the garage door, there's another set of inconspicuous doors that the trash is inside of that, so we've kind of contained it. the back, and then there's that sloping surface that comes up from the children's area on top of it. So they're kind of integrated as a kind of joint series of elements, but not disparate in how they start to read as a part of the whole structure.
And the...
Oh, and the trash, yeah, sorry.
It's on the lower.
The trash is tucked under there as well. Just off to where you see the garage door, there's another set of inconspicuous doors that the trash is inside of that. So we've contained it. Not trash laying out all over, for sure.
Okay. Is there, I hope not, but I don't see any fencing around the water features at all? Is there any planned?
It doesn't have it. It's, I think there was a comment earlier in Brittan Comment as well, that, you know, the management of the landscape, if you look at the site plan, all your paths from the water and proximity to it are a great distance away, and then it's gonna be the kind of thicker plantings. And so it really is, when you get closer to the building, it's more manicured and, you know, tactile. As you get away towards the south, it is, it's more of landscape at a distance, and the plan is really kind of built that way. Early on, we were looking at paths that we kind of went through it and engaged it more, and we thought that's not the right approach, that it really is a passive landscape meant to work, manage water, bring biodiversity, but it isn't something that you're frolicking in. It's not a working...
Right. So I mean, the comment on skating, I mean, it's not really gonna be inviting for skating, and you're not gonna encourage that in any way. Okay. Or swimming, certainly. You know, oftentimes, when you're looking at buildings and public buildings, there's plans for expansion. This is one's quite a bit smaller than the existing. I know that Hennepin County has a lot of square footage of space, so are you, is there any consideration for where, I mean, this is gonna be a popular spot, any consideration for expansion?
We've done a robust pre-design and analysis of what this library, based in the community, the adjacent libraries. We have Oxburn not too far, Penn Lake, Washburn. So I think in general, and especially in our partnership with the Art Center as well, I mean, the, trying to be a, you know, right fit for that site is also important for us. And so getting it right was more important than necessarily future-proofing, something that, you know, we can maybe look at in the future, but not necessarily accommodate in right now.
So you nailed it, hopefully. Yeah. That's good.
Like always, right?
Of course, yeah.
Crystal ball.
And then really, the last question is really just, you talk about all the events that might happen here. Is there any consideration for other tenant space and/or catering kitchen, kitchen space for events? Or not?
Well, we've always thought of the South Plaza as having flexibility for types of events that, you know, we do have some areas that are planned for temporary tents and things like that, too. So I think there's a flexibility in terms of how you use those spaces that might be not permanent, but enable kind of things that come up and pop up as well. So we've tried to, you really leverage the landscape as this flexible thing. Interior spaces are flexible, too. It's all raised floors and meant to be able to be adaptable long-term into the future. So we've tried to build in adaptability and flexibility as much as possible.
And another note is that summer camps are gonna be coming back and really flourish. So we accommodated the Edina Art Centers program, so they do have what's more like a kitchenette. They're encouraged to have catering, but it being part of the bring it onsite, not do it onsite.
Okay. So maybe food trucks along the way or something like that?
That'd be awesome, yeah.
That'd be cool. Yeah, I love the design. It's great. It's a very beautiful building. It's gonna be a very busy building. And the one, just the only other comment I had, it was when you were talking about the excess parking, I thought, well, it would be neat if some of it was permeable, and I see that there's about a third of it on the surface is permeable paving, so.
Right.
You know, even if that went to a paver situation, it might be even more inviting. But thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I got a couple. First off, I think of all the feedback that we kind, or at least personally that we requested from our sketch plan review, I'd say that you knocked it out of the park with the spectacular state-of-the-art design, both the appearance of the building as well as the function. I think, as you might recall, there was a lot of unknowns when we first saw you. Basically, nothing, just a box, a parking lot, and a hole in the ground. So I commend you on that. This is going to be a wonderful, beautiful addition to the city. As was noted then, like, an art center and a library is very important to every community, so I'm excited to see that. And while this kind of fills in a lot of what in regards of how the land is being used, and I can kind of understand how you're getting there, and have some suggestions and comments kind of to piggyback on some other questions and comments here. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up again, like, why the land is being used this particular way. And it gets back to some of the comments and questions we had during sketch plan about a year and a half ago. And the worry we had was, you know, like, we don't see much, and the next time we'll see you is a fully designed, you know, formal proposal with limited amount and capacity to course correct. And so some of the feedback and what I brought up to staff today just gets back to kind of the process. So like us as planning commissioners, whenever something's proposed that deviates, you know, we start with a comprehensive plan. And what's in there is the South Dill District Plan and the Design Experience Guidelines. And again, I'm looking at those, and I'm just gonna quote it because I just want to make sure that, like, the residents who helps create these plans, which is like the shared vision for this area, is represented, and if it deviates, I just want to understand why. But let me just read this. So the Design Experience Guidelines sets baseline guidance for developers, designers, City of Edina staff, planning commissioners, and members of the City Council when proposing designing or evaluating proposed introductions within the Greater South Dill District, which is clarified just below. And they should be referred to when embarking on new development or redevelopment. There is no distinction whether there's a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment. It's basically if someone's proposing anything new or different in this area, we should start with those principles, which are rooted in urban design sets of framework. And as was mentioned by Commissioner Miranda kind of very passionately during the sketch plan is, you know, what we see, although it's incredible and beautiful, is very suburban. You know, it's a standalone building with surface parking, a lot of landscape, and this is eight acres of prime real estate right in the center of our busiest commercial area in the city. So I would just like to hear from the design team, the project team, why, like fundamentally, we're seeing something so different than what we as a community expect to see from a basic framework level? Is that a fair, big question? I just gotta hear something because I haven't heard anything in a year and a half that satisfies why it deviates to me. And knowing if the ship has sailed, which it seems like it has, I will definitely have feedback for the details, but why we do these big things like the small area plan we're hoping to approve tonight is, so we start that process off on the right foot, and we're meeting the needs and the future-oriented aspirations of the city. So I'd just like you to speak to that. And that's my big question, why? Good luck, I guess.
I'll start, but I'll welcome anyone from my team to jump in. So looking at, you know, the current condition and what those amenities in the service center was, and obviously what we can bring it forward into the future. We also recognize how critical that site is for us as a county and the relationship between the library and that green space, and also identifying the 100-year flood plane. So that put a lot of constraint on that south side of the site as well. So trying to balance out the priorities and still keeping that site as a whole was important for us while also aligning with that partnership as well. So what we were trying to balance out with some of the things that Matthew mentioned are really taking in consideration those South Dill District's guidelines with the cross and the division of those blocks, even though we weren't, we aren't doing that physically. We're doing nods to that in terms of the pedestrian access. Likewise, with the orientation of the building, and then some of those nods to the adjacent intersections as well. So I think trying to find that balance of still keeping our priorities with keeping the full acreage and bringing it to the future with the sustainable practices while also still recognizing that district guidelines.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, having looked at the guidelines based on our last conversation and struggling with what scope is, what we have, and how do we think about the future, because really, that's what the guidelines are about, right? What is the future here? And barring putting more buildings on the site, which is not the scope that I have, looking at it and saying, okay, here is a way to take a piece of prime real estate like you mentioned, and in a way, make it something Minnesotan and biodiverse and healthy and accessible and connected, and imagining, you know, when Target changes and you have, you know, five, six-story structures that are full of life and restaurants and mixed use right across the street, and you can look across and walk very easily to a place that is biodiverse, healthy, open, full of daylight. I feel like making those connection points and preserving some of the space, I hope, is not a detriment to that, but a kind of lifeline to a healthy and valued environment. So that's my, you know, over-the-top kind of belief in that we can do things right now that don't necessarily meet the letter of it, but can connect to what's potential in the future. And so I'm hoping for that, right, in what we've done with the scope we have on the table.
Yeah, I guess, speaking to some stuff, and again, if it's out of your purview, like you mentioned with scope, and you can kind of see the site now is in generally, you know, there's kind of quadrants, kind of, right? One of the suggestions, not just from me, but other commissioners and in those principles, is, you know, these transitions to the neighborhood as well as maximizing potential of land that could be used for more value, e.g., the parking in the northeastern corner versus housing. You know, we talked about this housing crisis. The city knows about it, the county knows about it. Why was housing neglected to be considered or some other multi-use component elsewhere on the site? And I know that's outside your scope, but if there's someone here that could answer that, I think it would, it'd matter a lot to the constituents who kind of put together these guidelines and plans.
Yeah, I definitely can't answer that, but...
As I mentioned, the story of South Dill started in 2015, and so it's had a lot of hats and a lot of different conversations with many different individuals that included maybe some of those scenarios. And I think as we've progressed to the current design, this is where we've landed as the prominent priority for us, and I will hand it over to David.
Thank you.
Sheriff Commissioners, my name's David Huff. I'm the Hennepin County Administrator. Actually, was, we started in about 2010 with a property that was an amalgamation of multiple buildings that had been built over many years. We had a district court function, we had a service center, and we had a library, and at one time, it housed probation services. So we were looking at an obsolete set of buildings that was underutilized. We had to close portions because the roof was leaking. I remember back in 2012, looking at costs to preserve the building, and they ranged from 40 to 120 million. 120 million is what the central library cost when it was constructed two decades ago. So over the years, we have been approached many, many times by developers wanting to buy the property, an 8-acre parcel, as you pointed out, Sheriff. And once it's gone that way, it's gone. We wanted to hold the property and really create a community amenity. As you know, South Dill Library is one of the premier libraries in the 41 library system, and I don't mean to pull any light away from the other libraries that we hold, but it's a premier library from the standpoint of utilization, collection, and just access. And so we decided to hold the property. We had multiple iterations of how we would do this. We had lots of diagrams with boxes over the years. It had housing at one point, and we decided that let's take the hardscape off that eight acres. Let's work with the city of Edina. Let's figure out what the needs of the city of Edina are. We talked about the Art Center. We talked about green space, and as you've seen, it's a beautiful green space. This is in the Hennepin County Board's Capital Improvement Program. It's 100, hopefully, 121 million project, dollar project, that will finance utilizing our AAA bond rating and provide a phenomenal amenity. You've all asked great questions. We're very proud of what we have here, and we hope you're supportive of this design so that we can proceed and get it opened in 2027.
Thank you for the answer. I appreciate it. I'll have comments to follow up on that, but I appreciate kind of the transparency and getting to the root cause of why we're seeing what I would say is a disparity between expectations that we have for how the land's being used and how it might be used and why it's a benefit. I guess my last question, and then depending on the answer, I'll have, I'll tweak my feedback once we kind of have our comments. But you mentioned in regards to the site design, maybe some of it's parking, parking access, sidewalks, contouring. How much of that is fluid and/or you are open to changes with some of the details? You know, preserving trees, you know, enlarging sidewalks or kind of moving that stuff around? Where are you at in the design that you would accommodate, you know, recommendations to do that as well? Are you pretty firm with what we're seeing?
I can give you a context of all the conversations that got us to where we are. So one thing is maintenance and management of it. You know, the more sidewalks and that you have, the more effort there is, and then also proximity, right? Earlier conversations about what do you have access to, what don't you? Is it a working landscape? Is it an engagement landscape? And so there's a tremendous amount of push and pull and negotiating between multiple factors that has gotten it to where it is. So if you pull one of the strings, you know, you start pulling on another string somewhere. So I'd have a hard time saying, you know, what's off the table, what's on the table. But I think our process with the people involved has really developed something that I would stand by that is highly accessible, provides the right amount of access, and is manageable in that aspect. Topography and that is really challenging with the great changes, and to be able to achieve ADA at every location and make it feel seamless, you start pulling that lever and we see some things. So I think it's best just to hear your comments and let us ask ourselves, you know, does, is that something that's good and can we do it, right? It might be good, and it's like it unravels everything, or it might be good, and it's like, yeah, we should just do that. It works, and it's within the purview and everything that we've been trying to achieve.
And I want to maybe emphasize some of our other subject matter experts that we're working with, which is the City of Edina's parks and as well as Three Rivers Park District. So some of the technical in terms of the makeup of the assembly of our trails, the whists, and even kind of the borders, I mean, that's all going through a lot of lenses. So I, to your confidence, I know we have the right people on our project teams, but I think we're always open ear to.
Okay. Yeah, no, and as I mentioned, when we saw the sketch plan, there was a lot left to be desired, and then you guys did take at least that feedback and really, let's say, augmented the design before it got to City Council. So people are aware of the process, like, if we make a recommendation tonight, it's not a binding one, it is one to the City Council, who ultimately has the authority to make the call. However, if there is time between now and then for you to include... is time between now and then for you to include suggestions or tweaks to it, I'd strongly recommend those be considered and implemented. But thanks. And I guess I would just turn it. Maybe we could just go down the row if people have final comments or if they have more questions. Typically, we do this question and answer.
You still need to open the public hearing.
Yeah, gosh, my goodness. Okay, we do. All right. Well, I appreciate it. We're going to open it to a public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Wow, getting ahead of myself here. I'm looking at the time. Okay, so this is the second public hearing of three tonight, and Steph did have it on my page. It's just shrunk, and I missed it. So for those who are tuning in remotely, if you're not waiting in the queue since the previous one, please call the following number, 312-535-8110. Enter access code 28610723508. The password is 5454, and press star three on your keypad when you would like to get in the queue to speak. While we wait for you to do that, we will open it right now to those who are here in person that would like to testify. Please come up to either podium, state your full name, address, and you got three minutes. Thanks for hanging around for this. We appreciate it.
Yeah, my name is Michael Waring. I live at 722, 7220 York Avenue South. I overlook the current library. I'll be overlooking the construction of the new library. And I was originally only going to state that I understand that the motion that's going to finish this all up will be to approve the height variance. And I can assure you that nobody in our building would object to approving a height variance. And that was going to be what I was going to limit my comments to. But I will also say that as it relates to the process of going from some sort of philosophical statement made in developing a plan and then coming to the point that you have been presented this evening, has to, it would be interminable, interminable, if you did all of the little getting into the nuts and bolts. If you, I was a superintendent of schools for 11 years, not in Minnesota. And I can tell you this, somebody has to come up with a plan to go forward, and you can't have everybody in the world involved in that process. So I think the people who presented tonight have done an amazing job.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else here in person I'd like to testify? Seeing none, I guess we'll turn to the queues. Anyone in the queue that's ready to speak? It's been over a minute?
Yep. Nobody is in the queue to speak, so I think it's safe to proceed.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Pecking.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move. Public hearing has been closed. Now we can bring it back to the planning commission to deliberate. If there's not any more questions, usually out of efficiency, it's easy to just again to go down the line to share comments one by one and then follow it up with a motion for something this large.
I have nothing else.
Okay.
Okay, just a few comments. It's a beautiful building. I'm not an architect, but so I wouldn't say I have refined taste in buildings, but I know what I like. And I think it's an impressive building, and it's going to look nice in our community. So thanks for the quality of the design. I like the fact that it's closer to York, brings it more into the community, less of a separate institution than it is right now. I have a lot of empathy for what Sheriff Bennett was talking about, is just the most basic of land use questions on this project. We, I mean, perhaps might have preferred different land uses in some respects, but Hennepin County owns the land, and Hennepin County is going to figure out what to do with it. And I guess I can rationalize that. My main thought was, well, is this a place where we need more open space? Probably not. But as you said a few minutes ago, there's plenty of density to the west. There's going to be more density to the west, so I can feel comfortable with that that way. Parking, I mentioned before, it's a pet peeve, but I can rationalize that too, with the trade with all the other wonderful sustainability things that you've done on the project. And I do think that you've done a very impressive job since we saw you last as far as connectivity to and around the space. I really think you've done a good job thinking about how people are going to access this building, what modes, where they're going to go. You've done a nice job making that work. Last thing I'll say, so I'm very supportive. Last thing I'll say, and Director Teague, maybe you can help me understand what we, how we as a planning commission can influence the last step of connectivity to the southeast, to the park, and to the trail. It's not, it's not the applicant's job. Is that already part of a plan? Or what can we do to make it part of a plan so it's ready when the building's ready?
I believe that that is the plan for the city to make that connection. But you could, you could add that as a recommendation to the City Council, that the city complete that connection.
Okay, thanks.
I have a couple of concerns. One is the noise, as I think Commissioner Smith alluded to. I'm at the library a lot with young children, and it is not quiet. It is not anywhere close to quiet. So I have a little bit of concern about the atrium and the openness of it. And I certainly appreciate the visual that you gave us and the idea behind it. But I'm a little concerned about the noise and the acoustics. I'm also concerned a little bit about the entrance and the exit and bicycle access in particular, because really the only place kids go on bicycles, I mean, that's for long before anybody in this, you know, anybody in this room was growing up, was you take your bicycle to the library. So the fact that it isn't just adults or employees that will be using, that will be accessing the library by a bicycle, but it'll be children as well. So I think extra care needs to be taken in terms of access for bicycles. I think the city needs to be aware that as in its new iteration, particularly with all the green space, the library will be a reflection of its greater purpose and value, which is serving a greater population than readers and borrowers. And that is something that is, the city just has to be prepared for. So I think that that's not on you guys at all. That's something that the city can't come back and say in a couple of years, oh, we didn't know there'd be people hanging around outside or something like that. That's going to be part of what's going to happen. And the city needs to own that. Having said all that, I am fully supportive of this. And I think there is nothing that reflects better on either the city or the county, certainly, than, you know, a facility such as this in between the library and the art center. So I think when you go in as a stranger, you go to a neighborhood, and you want to assess or try to make a judgment about a city, you look at the library and the services it provides. So I think this is a wonderful step forward.
Thank you again for the presentation. So I think you got a lot of questions tonight, and you answered a lot of questions tonight. I appreciate Sheriff Bennett's concern with the design guidelines and how this land is being utilized. But one thing that helps tremendously is when developers like yourself on the team answer transparently with your thought process of how you got there. That goes a long way to helping residents understand why this is here. And it goes a long way, right? So even though it may not hit everything from the design guidelines, we know why it's here and what you're trying to do. I certainly raised the questions that I had. Noise was one. You answered it with B3, sustainability and building design. So I think that helps. And then you covered a lot when it comes to the ecosystem and sustaining it and the management. So that's really clear. And I think that's really important for folks to understand. Overall, I'm very supportive. You bring art, you bring education and learning together. That's how you build culture. That's how you build societies. That's how you transform a community into a growth community. And so this is a very unique item, right? You combine these two. So I'm very excited. I love what I see. I love how you transformed that hardcover asphalt area that doesn't get utilized into something that is biodiverse and driving sustainability, right? And again, channeling a little bit of Lou here, right? We want to get more sustainability. We want to think about climate. We want to think about biodiversity. I think you guys have hit all three points really well with this design. So I'm very excited. I hope this moves to the next stage for the team. I think you guys did a really good job of coming back with something that's really beautiful, and I think it's going to really drive culture here in the city.
Okay, we've covered a lot of ground already, so I'll just say compliments to the team and to the county on the process to date. Fantastic design. I've been to the existing library. I see that this plan for this library, and I'm, I have two children due in May, and I'm much more excited about bringing them to this proposed library than the existing library. So, thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to talk in terms of land use. And I am okay with a monumental building and a, with an open space in front of it. I think it's appropriate for the site. I think it's appropriate to have density to the west. This is also, you know, because this is a Hennepin County site. It is in the city of Edina, but it's Hennepin County land, and it is right next to Richfield. And there is a whole series of small-scale single-family homes just to the east of here. So this library is not just for Edina. It is for the whole area. And I think they're recognizing that in the layout of this. So I'm completely okay with the open space in front of this and save that density for properties that are west of this and north of this. And I, I agree with you that the way the site is accessed through pedestrians and the crosswalks and people going, is breaking down this large eight-acre property into smaller areas, discrete areas. The building on one side, the open space on the other, the gathering space in the middle. So I actually do think it conforms to South Dale guidelines in terms of breaking down the block. I think the art center is the wild card in terms of parking in some ways, because our art center was so tucked away before. Now it's going to be in a much more prominent, very easy-to-access place. So I think it could, you could have issues with parking. And I am thrilled that you are willing to partner with the city of Edina and allow the art center to be in there. I think that's a, a good synergy. So I'm in, I'm in support of this variance.
It's funny, I appreciate the thought, but did not see the sort of more existential land use question. It is a library today. It's going to be a library tomorrow. It's not up for sale, and we don't own it. So in my mind, it would be as if, you know, the Target site wanted to become Joanne Fabric or, you know, whatever the new, the new thing is. I think you've done a fabulous job. I think it'll be a huge amenity. I think whoever said that the commercial space eventually will have more density and more people was right on the money. There will continue to be more density there, and proximity of the library is great. I think it's going to make for a fun challenge for you as architects to make sure those street crossings are kid-friendly for those biking from the Bauer or the Weston or wherever, and make it attractive when it is a drive-by, but then it's also a walk too on that. So I think you have a fun challenge there. It looks beautiful. I'm really excited about all the environmental commitment and sustainable design, and I think it'll be a great asset.
All right. Thank you. As I said before, just state-of-the-art facility and appearance and function. I mean, it would be, it will be an amazing attribute to the city. I guess, again, where I just, or my huge hangup is, is while this is amazing, I firmly believe that we have not seen something that could have been better. And if it's a trade-up between the county keeping the land and building a library there versus selling all of it off, I am in favor of what is being done. However, there are creative partnerships that can be done where some of the land's set, you know, set aside for someone, and you're developing things, you know, in close collaboration with each other, like Centennial Lakes, right? I mean, if that was just one use, it would, it wouldn't be as bold or exciting. I think with eight acres, we sold ourselves short here. And I just, I feel like this has happened with the city too, with the fire station site. I don't think we should preclude anyone from sticking to our guidelines. That's kind of the whole point of coming together and developing a vision. So whether it's the city who wants to do their thing, or it's the county, I mean, we still have to hold each other accountable with kind of achieving our vision. That said, I am favorable to what this uses and where we're at currently. I am just disappointed in the process that didn't lead us to something more drastic and exciting. So for my comments of how to, say, improve some of this and what would get my support is the parking, surface parking. I mean, we don't need it. And I think the approach currently is backwards of build it, and then if we don't need it, remove it. I think you should build what you need, and then if you need more, build it. If someone has to park for a couple months across the road and that dissuades them to visit, I don't think that's a risk worth settling for. I think you snip out the east part of the parking, move that access point more mid-block, like Commissioner Nelson pointed out. And then you can reserve that east side to not necessarily expansion, but maybe there comes a time where, hey, it makes sense to do some housing or some other use along that eastern side. I think you have, like, we have to think of the future. And in terms of that site, that eastern and northeastern quadrant could be better served instead of just having cars parked. So I strongly encourage you to shrink the design of the parking just to the west and have it, have it ready to go if you need to expand it to the east. But that allows more of that future adaptive reuse. Sidewalks, the south sidewalk running east-west, I'd like to see that wider. It looks narrow. The sidewalk to the west, I think it would be wise to do a spur that connects kind of to that platform that goes out into the water. That's where there's those heritage trees. Think you could just use that path that used to be the entrance for another sidewalk and keep those heritage trees. The grading doesn't need to change all that much from your plan. The northwest corner, that's a lot of concrete. And while it is being told to us as a plaza, a plaza on the corner of a busy road is not going to be a plaza. Like, when you have this whole site, no one's going to linger there. I think keeping some of those trees, they've made it a long time, like even, even four out of the eight or 10. out of the eight or 10, could frame a nice sign, a nice welcoming place to this natural open area. And then keeping the, the trees in general, it looks like a lot are eliminated along the west. I would encourage the sidewalk to shift farther than eight feet from the road. You've got 50 feet to work with. There's maybe a swale, but could you move it another 10 feet and then keep those trees that are protected trees there? As far as the water feature, I heard some conflicting information, like from seeing the, the footprint of it, if, if it really stays eight feet deep, like permanently, great, but from how small that footprint, like shrunk to and like the normal operating area, it looked more like two feet deep. So whatever you can do to kind of design it, line it with a way to keep more water in it than just a couple feet would be better. That's all I got for my comments and suggestions. Anything else from anyone? All right. I guess I'd open it to a motion. And if there's any, I guess, Carrie, we don't necessarily need to do some binding feedback as part of a recommendation, but there's been some suggestions here with noise and some site features. I guess we just can assume you guys are taking note of that, unless there's something super binding that any commissioners believe in.
Well, I just, I, I mean, around the noise issue, I mean, I think it was addressed that they had mentioned it was the quietest library they've designed to date, and they used to design them pretty quiet. So, I mean, I think a lot of thought's gone into it. So I, you know, again, I think, I think we're pretty good there. At least I'm good. I'm, I understand it.
Yeah.
I feel good about it.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the City Council approve the conditional use permit site plan and building height variance for 7001 York Avenue.
One second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Alkire.
Aye.
Commissioner Padilla.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Felton.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanneman.
Aye.
Chair Bennett.
Aye.
Congratulations on the next step. Really hope you take some of the feedback we shared tonight, if it's not too late, and incorporate it into a perfect plan for the City Council to see. Thank you so much for all the great work and coordination, collaboration. All right. We're only way behind schedule. We're going to do a five-minute water bathroom break, and we'll be back, well, let's do four minutes, so nine forty-five, be back. I was kind of looking around like we're waiting on a couple people, and it looks like you're there. So I think we're good to go. Addison, if you want to take this way. So this is the third and final public hearing about Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan. Take it away.
And we're here tonight to present the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan. This was a 2024 work plan item for the Commission. Commissioners Day, Felton, Miranda were the assigned leads from the Commission to lead this item. There was also a working group that was formed that had six other members. Those individuals were Nancy Spanas, Steve Brown, Jignasha Pandya, Corinne Griffith, Jim Dali, and Russ Rubin. The city also hired Men Collaborative as a consultant to assist with the plan. Zach Lockham is the project manager. He's here tonight to give a presentation, give an overview of the plan. As with all of our small area plans, the intent is that we would adopt this as an amendment to the comprehensive plan, which requires Metropolitan Council review. So the request here tonight is for you all to recommend to the City Council that the council authorized staff to submit it to the Met Council for review. So before I turn it over to Zach, though, I think that Commissioners Day and Felton want to say a few words about the process, so I'll hand it over to them.
Before I start, I want to acknowledge all of the work Lou Miranda has done on the, as the Planning Commission chair of the Lincoln-Londonderry Small Area Plan. He worked on this diligently for much of the past year, and only because he's not here tonight am I helping to introduce the report. So how to plan for our city has always been a topic and sometimes intense debate. What can individuals and businesses do with their land? What are the needs of the community, the city, the region, and the state? What are the existing conditions? How is the site currently zoned, and where do we want it to go? If we want to be responsible to residents who live here, businesses that operate here, and the health and well-being of our children, it is important to take the time to take in all the information that goes into the planning of our communities. We need to identify and understand the place, the people, views, traffic, engineering, infrastructure, shared amenities, land use, and land values. This happens through gathering information from our planning staff, engineering staff, urban planners, and by talking to and listening to each other. This is why our city takes time to do small area plans. It is both for hearing the residents and businesses and communities, but is also to allow us as residents and individuals to participate in learning about each other, our city, and how we learn to engage in building our community. I'd also like to thank Men in guiding us through the plan and creating a document that is both comprehensive and clearly written. For the small area plan, I'm going to reiterate, we had just shy of 40 individuals apply to be a part of the working group. Of these applicants, we were only able to select six to participate. These six were homeowners, retirees, currently working, former commission members, new residents, lifelong residents, current business owners, and former business owners. Addison's got through their names, but I want to appreciate their taking the time to participate, listen, provide feedback, and most importantly, to share what they have learned with their neighbors.
So good introduction to overall why we have small area plans and what that process looks like. Wanted to specific, get into a few specific details about this small area plan and how we, how we function. You know, from a team level, we met semi-regularly and would discuss, you know, basically every step of the way, how we went from initial concepts down to greater detail and decide as a team, you know, what we liked, what we disliked about that. As Meriwether said, you know, as members of the Planning Commission and then just members of the community, I thought we worked extremely well together. And we, one thing that we did well together was engage with the community, and I thought that was a great, great thing that Men really helped facilitate. You know, early on in the process, we had public engagement events over by, like, the Caribou Coffee, over there on, you know, the Lincoln-Londonderry kind of business park, I would call it, or complex over there. We had events at Walnut Ridge Park. We had poster sessions where we would introduce residents to early concepts and really get them thinking about what we would like to see in the area and inform them about, right, the long-term vision of not just that area, but the area around it as well, right? So transportation, right, the Green Line extension, think about how those things interact with the rest of the plan. At one point, we did a, you know, Meriwether helped lead a walking tour of the area with some residents and kind of explain the process and explain what we are capable of doing with a small area plan and what we're not capable of doing. I helped lead a bike tour. Zach was there as well, so we biked around the area and kind of, again, gave the same overview to people. So that was a great experience. And then even after that event, there was a, a member that had a small business in that business complex just to the south of Minneapolis Realtors Association, and the mayor and I walked through there and got some, got a kind of overview of that, that facility and whatnot, and why that, that particular business owner liked that area. Another thing we did well, so beyond the public engagements, so after we did some of those early events, we had a, a business survey. So members of the Commission and members of the small area plan went out and talked to just about every single business owner in the area. And I definitely want to highlight Steve Brown's work on that because he put together a really comprehensive overview of that. But we basically went out and said, you know, asked people, what were their plans for the area, for the future? Did they plan on staying there for the long term? Do they plan on moving to different facilities in, in the short term, right? What, how, what have they invested? And, you know, what did they want to see in the area in order for them to stay there potentially? And then, you know, really, how did the area meet their needs or not meet their needs in order to help inform the small area plan as we went forward? We had a few different draft reviews with residents. There was some quizzing. There was a, I don't remember the platform that we used to.
To meter.
Yep, yep. So an interactive quiz, which we weren't allowed to, I wasn't allowed to participate because I knew the answers, so I got first place. But the residents liked those types of activities as well as, you know, vote, different voting of ideas, and then doing kind of hands-on activities in terms of, all right, here's a block of space for this, for the street. If you have X number of feet to try to fit in, can you do a curb here? Can you do green space? How does that work with a trail and whatnot? It really, I think, helped visualize for residents what could fit in, in the Lincoln-Londonderry area. So overall, you know, I thought we got, did a good job of engaging with the community. We had lots of different perspectives offered, which is a good thing. We did, you know, really want to hear other people's opinions. We didn't just want to listen for our opinions to come out of their mouths, which, you know, is, should be the overall goal of engaging with your residents. And how well the team did, and really Men specifically, I think, you know, in taking feedback that we received is reflected in the, the final kind of draft that we're here today. And really, the, I mean, I haven't seen much public pushback to it. I think we've got some limited, some limited comments just on some minor details, but overall, I think people that I've talked to have embraced it and are looking forward to this. So with that, we can talk about the details of the plan.
Great. Thank you both for that, that introduction. So I will try and go fairly quickly for you. I have a few slides here, but I know you've had some time to sit with the plan as a document as well, so I'm sure we can jump into more details as necessary. So we began this process roughly last, you know, I think I am going to, just so I can see a little better, I think I'm going to use one of these, if that's okay? I've got mic three. Is that okay? Okay, perfect. Just so I can see a little better. I'm sorry, it's past my bedtime, so my eyes are not where they're normally are. So we started roughly last May, and we used a sort of three-stage process. The first phase was really looking at understanding the area, getting a good sense of what the key constraints and opportunities on the site were. The second phase looked at really envisioning the future and beginning to develop vetted strategies. And then the final phase was really in documenting an implementation approach. We are now moving towards that actual adoption. And in each one of those phases, we did do public engagement as a component of that. Ryan already gave a pretty good overview of a number of the ways that we were, that we did do outreach. One of the things that I'll add to that, that we really tried to be sensitive about, was really trying to pay attention to who was coming to us and who wasn't, and thinking about ways that we could adapt our engagement approach in order to reach different groups. So, for example, after the first community workshop, which we held in the park, we noted that a couple of the groups that we knew that we had wanted to talk to, specifically renters and families, were a little less present than we had hoped they would be at that event. And so we used pop-up events at, going to a park at a time when youth sports were happening, actually going to the Loden, which is the large apartment building in the neighborhood, and setting up at their amenity deck and talking to people as a part of that. So really trying to make sure that we were bringing in a lot of different perspectives, not just the ones that we always hear, but really making sure that we were trying to get a broad cross-section of the community as a part of that. As Ryan said, there was also extensive outreach to the business and building owners themselves, really wanting to understand their perspective on the site. We were asked, you know, as a part of this, you know, kind of where are these comments coming from? There was, you know, some concern in the community around ideas being pushed from outside the community or other things like that. We weren't able to track that throughout the entire course of the project, but we did track it on some of our online engagement, and you can see, I think this map is actually fairly representative of, most of the feedback that we were getting was from kind of the Breston Park and Parkwood Knolls areas, but there was some folks coming from broader parts of the community, and many of the business owners obviously lived in, in other areas of the community or even outside of Edina as well. We started off really wanting to understand what people loved about the place already and using that as something that we could build off of. So we asked initial questions that we're really trying So, we asked initial questions that were really trying to get to that. Nature, recreation, and the trails were clear in a way, the main thing that people said that they loved about the area and that that was something that was really, really important to them. We also heard about the general peaceful, quiet, some of the low dense, lower density nature of some of the surrounding areas as key components as well. We also asked what people thought that we needed more of in the future, Lincoln-London Dairy needs. Restaurant and grocery, small-scale, community-serving retail. People told us a lot, the London Dairy shops, which are right there on the southern side of the road, were something that people liked a lot and said, that's actually a good template for something that we would like to see more of in this area. We heard people talking about desire for more housing. We also heard people talk about the desire for there not to be more housing, so there were definitely opinions in both directions there. But in general, some of those retail and key areas were things that were really put forward. Out of the initial engagement, we started to develop some key themes around some of the things that people were really talking a lot about, the connection to nature, the desire to have access to restaurants, small businesses, looking at what types of housing opportunities might be possible on the site, things around safety and mobility. And then, there was a strong through line throughout the process of community members wanting to make sure that they continue to have opportunities to hear their voice heard as things move forward. So, using that as a jumping off point, we developed community priorities in these six key areas and worked with our working group to establish a vision statement in 2040. The Lincoln-London Dairy area will be a welcoming gateway to western Edina. There will be shops, restaurants, homes, and jobs, all in a natural setting along Nine Mile Creek. It will be thoughtfully and sustainably designed, blending eco-friendly amenities with natural beauty. The area will be easy to get to and move around in with bike lanes and trails, walking past bus stops, and carefully integrated parking. The Lincoln and London Dairy area will be a great place to live, work, and gather, fostering community and encouraging people to use trails and gathering spaces. And building from that, we actually developed a sort of goal statement around each of these priorities as well. So, promoting a balanced approach to housing that respects community needs and preferences, encouraging a diverse array of local businesses that support the community's needs, creating vibrant spaces that encourage and foster community and inclusivity, preserving and enhancing the natural environment, prioritizing sustainability and outdoor activities, ensuring safe, accessible, and efficient movement for all, and then foster a forward-thinking approach to development that involves the community. So, one of the biggest constraints on this whole process, and I'm sure as planning commissioners you all are aware of this, is the issues relating to sewer capacity. And so, as we were developing this community vision, we also wanted to be realistic about both what the market conditions were, but also, what are the actual conditions for being able to build in this area? And that was one of the key drivers. The map that you see here shows the area that, within Edina, that has a constraint on its sewage capacity. And you can see that our study area, which is outlined in black, is only actually a very small portion of the area with those sewer constraints. So, the current situation that we were operating under is that the sewage capacity is basically nearly fully utilized within this entire zone, which means that, for the most part, any new development that would happen there would need to utilize some sort of capacity shift on-site. In other words, if you took down a building with eight toilets, you could put up a new building with eight toilets, or something along those same lines. But actually drastically increasing or decreasing, that would, would have major changes. So, in thinking about future opportunities, we had to think about what were opportunities for capacity shifts on-site. And then, in the longer term, there are these two other options of connecting to Minnetoka system or upgrading Edina system. However, those are big enough picture questions that they really need to be addressed in your next comp plan cycle. It's not something that we, doing this particular study, could fully address in order to really get to that. So, the way that we ended up really developing the plan with these sort of constraints in mind was the idea that there's a number of types of recommendations that we can make today in terms of improving the public realm, in terms of connecting some of the natural features, in terms of wayfinding, in terms of art, in terms of public space, and minor changes in some of the land use on the site that can be accommodated, given the current constraints. And then, there's an opportunity, should this be resolved in your next comp plan cycle and the decision be made, to upgrade that system, to actually be able to allow more development within this whole orange area, what types of recommendations would we make then at that point that would point us towards that type of future development as well? And so, the plan sort of breaks itself into a little bit in terms of, what are the short-term improvements that are really going to lead us towards some of those future opportunities? And then, how do we set up for the future in terms of the longer-term opportunities? So, as I said, the current capacity, minor changes to land use, establishing the policies and the design guidelines and all of the things that would guide future development, mobility improvements, beautification improvements. And then, in the long term, looking at some of those potential major changes to circulation and land use. So, I won't go through each one of the recommendations here. It would be, it would be here quite a while, but I'm happy to go in more detail. This map sort of summarizes the current capacity recommendations, so you can see, despite the limitations, there are a number of things we can do. This focuses on issues of making sure that we're establishing design guidelines, that we are looking to attract more neighborhood-scale development, looking at improvements to the trail, connections to the new light rail, improvements to intersections, beautification, greening, all of those sorts of elements within that area. And then, in the long term, looking at some opportunities for, example, on the children's site, thinking about master planning, mixed-use development on the site, what would that look like? That's already a site that's actually zoned for larger-scale mixed-use development, so if it's not working as an office anymore, what would that look like? Looking at some of the other redevelopment opportunities that could come with time, as well as thinking about larger changes in the circulation pattern in order to be able to make that development really work on-site. So, that's a very quick overview, but we're happy to dive into more of the details with you as well. And, yeah, excited to chat with you a little bit about this.
Thank you very much. Awesome. Know a lot about this process as commissioners have kept us well-informed throughout it. Commissioner Miranda, in particular, will give us updates after most Planning Commission meetings, as well as Ryan or Meriwether. And I would say there's been some creative improvements to the process that you guys have all done together that will serve as a good resource for other small area plan developments. Any questions from commissioners right now? Yeah? All right. Commissioner Smith.
Sure. Great. You know, I love how you were really quick and really clear with this, and thank you so much for getting us out. First off, great, big kudos to the whole team for, for working on this. It was a lot of work, I could tell, a lot of community engagement, which was awesome, and the production of something that, that really is very thoughtful, right? Just two questions from me for now. One is just on the setup of the working team. So, just curious, right? Like, when we decide to select out of all the applicants, who would be on this working team? You know, as we think about the future and we start working on other plans, like, just share with us a little bit of your process that you went through? How did you select them? What was the criteria? How did you narrow it down to the six? Is the first question. And then, the second question is on the circulation piece, right? So, in this document, circulation seems to be part of the long-term solution, which is dependent on, partly, I guess, dependent on the sewer capacity question that we have to resolve. But I'm trying to connect circulation to sewer capacity, and I'm not seeing the connection super clearly, so if you just share, why is it in that part of the future state? And what does it actually mean?
Sure. I can definitely talk about that, but I'll let Meriwether first talk about the working group.
So, the working group was all behind-the-scenes before. We had selected men, but Lou and Ryan and I selected the applications. We, we received the 40 applications. They submitted them to the city. The city sent them to us, and we independently kind of went through all of them and read them, and we all presented each other with our picks. And of those picks, we all, we had four people in common, and then it was just kind of picking the last two. We wanted to make sure, and we all wanted different things. I wanted to have renters on there. I wanted to have realtors on there. None of that happened. But we wanted to make sure that there were, like I said, there were younger people, people who'd been there for a while, people who are business owners, people that are new, new to the community, or people that have had experience with the city, and people that haven't had experience with the city. So, we wanted to kind of get a range of opinions and a range of people. So, we just had to work through that process. And the majority of the people we picked were already, we already matched on most of them.
Is that good?
Thank you. That's great.
Great. And to speak to the circulation, and I'll just go back to that map, you know, most of the circulation improvements that we draw here, the, the main things that you see here are really looking at ways to draw more traffic away from the existing neighborhood closer to the highway, kind of putting cars a little bit more on that side, as well as providing access to new development. And so, the reason that it's really in the long term isn't that you couldn't do those improvements in the short term, but that financially they wouldn't make sense to do unless you were doing the development associated with it. So, they, they really, you know, are sort of attached, and, and even from a funding standpoint, in most cases, probably you would actually have the developer do the improvement and then dedicate the roadways back to the city at that point. And so, that's why those have been sort of placed with the sort of larger-scale redevelopment that happens later on. There are, in the short term, intersection improvements and other types of improvements that would be helpful to mobility in the shorter term as well.
Gotcha. Makes sense. Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thanks for the presentation. I'd like to especially recognize the team for the community engagement plan. I think it's very clever and effective, and I particularly admire how you didn't get quite what you wanted or quite the population that you wanted, so you changed the plan. That was fantastic. And I think a, a good lesson for us all for the future. Just a couple of things. I couldn't tell, particularly in the long term, part of it, what the attitude of the plan is towards industrial. Couldn't quite tell whether you wanted it or not.
Yeah. We frankly left that intentionally vague with the knowledge that when we jump 10 to 15 years from now, the market conditions are likely to be completely different than what we are, and that you will likely need quite a bit of flexibility in thinking about what type of development ultimately might happen in that area. From the interviews that we did, we had users on-site who owned their buildings, had been there a long time. Because they had owned their buildings, it was not adding costs to them to stay there, and were pretty happy with their facilities from the standpoint of how the cost was affecting their buildings and so on. At the same time, looking at some of the market conditions research that we did, we know that this type of area for light industrial has been declining in terms of its sort of rentability. We also were hearing from the community that there was some idea that there was a desire to prioritize tax base as a key component, and the light industrial buildings in the area were the worst performing in terms of the tax per square foot that they were providing back to the city currently. So, there's, there's sort of pros and cons in both directions, and ultimately, we do think that some of that is going to be driven by individual building owners and, and what types of opportunity come to them, you know, when the land is saleable based on the capacity issues. Most of the land is, you know, frankly, not particularly saleable for other uses at this point because of those constraints. So, you might see a variety of things. We did also talk quite a bit, and this is something that hopefully will come up as you guys are working on resolving your code, the idea of makerspaces as a kind of new territory within your code that is not currently covered, that might allow for some forms of residential and light industrial to coexist in a little bit closer fashion than they do within the current code. That's something that some of your adjacent communities have, have started to develop within their code as well. So, there's kind of a variety of different directions, but frankly, we left some of that land use direction relatively vague in the long term, just because it does need to be reactive to the market conditions at the time that this is accomplished, which is probably, at very best case, a decade out.
Okay. Thanks. Kind of related to that question, earlier in the short-term section, there's some guidance on building form. One of them is 130-foot length. I mean, it's hard for me to eyeball, but in the long term, do, does the new development conform to 130-foot length?
The, the, the individual buildings, so on the map that we're looking at right here, the individual buildings do. The length of those townhouses that you see there, that is slightly longer than 150 feet with the idea that those are actually individual buildings on the block face.
Okay. But the other ones are more or less appropriately scaled for...
Yeah. We, we really tried to take the guidelines from the short term and then apply them to how we drew the long term, so that you would get, you know, of course, any developer is going to come back and, and give you a whole new set of ideas that they want to, but we wanted it to, to fit within the constraints that we were putting on it.
Okay. Just a couple more on S9 had to do with stormwater management. Is there, but my family lives on Minnehaha Creek or close to it. Is there a specific problem with stormwater management in this area that's different than the stormwater management problem by my house?
The, one of the main things is that most of the development pre-existed the existing stormwater ordinances, and so, you have a lot of situations where, for example, if you look at the office building that's on the far northern portion, their whole parking lot is graded toward, essentially to just take the runoff straight into the creek at the time. That was, you know, what they thought they should do. So, the, the, really working to kind of re-establish and re, just strengthen those guidelines, as well as looking at opportunities for, you know, potentially smaller-scale grants or other things to try and take care of some of those edge conditions that right now are actually not very good, was sort of the intent of the recommendation.
Okay.
The same is true on the, the children's site. Their parking also essentially just drains to, straight into the wetland there.
Okay. So, there may or may not be something in the Edina capital plan already, or did we look into that?
There probably wouldn't be on private land to do that. It would probably need to be something that would be done in partnership, but there are examples of grants and things like that that other cities have done in order to improve some of those edge conditions. And so, there are, there are some opportunities there to look at, at some of those opportunities with some of those private landowners. There's nothing, without them doing something that pulls a new permit, there's probably not any leverage that the city has, other than going to them and asking them nicely if they can do it at this point.
Okay. Great. And one more thing. On L4, so that was the green space in the future? The description didn't quite fit for me. It didn't seem like those areas were really buffering, I think what the quote was, buffering residential uses from retail, industrial, commercial. Not to say that they're bad things, but it just, they didn't seem like that's the purpose they were serving. Is it, is it really just preserving green space within the area? Is that what we're trying to do there?
Well, in, in some cases, so if you see like the L4 here that's labeled in-between, where we have kind of the townhouses and what are more drawn as the types of commercial buildings, you can see that there is kind of a larger sort of green space that is kind of established, kind of, you know, between the, the more residential uses and so on. Then, there's also, you know, kind of showing something similar with that label down next to the redevelopment of the children's site as well. So, yes, I, I would say that, you know, it's, it's about, in some cases, sort of trying to extend some of the green space that really surrounds the creek and the trail, in other areas kind to, kind of offset a little bit the maybe heavier commercial uses from the, the new residential that's being introduced.
Okay. And just, I know this is probably hard to, hard to benchmark, but the selection of neighborhood note, I think, went up to 60 dwelling units per acre? So, how, when we look at this drawing that you've got on the screen now, what, should we think that's close to 60? Half, some other number? I mean, is this the kind of density maximum that you're envisioning? Or is it somewhere in the middle, if that makes sense?
Yeah. So, with, with the changes to the future land use map, we tried to find, you know, what would kind of match?
know, what would kind of match the guidance in the small area plan. So in the small area plan, it talks about, you know, building heights generally not exceeding four stories, building coverage of about 30%. And so a range of, you know, 10 to 60 felt about right in kind of looking at other developments, past projects that have been approved and what those, what their density is, kind of based on the guidance that's called for here in this area, that that range felt appropriate. That's the existing range for neighborhood note that's already in the comp plan. So we could change it, but we just applied kind of what's already there to make it fit with this.
You wouldn't happen to know what the dwelling units per acre is for loading, would you?
It's 36.
Nice. Okay.
Yeah, and this, this drawing is probably roughly drawn around that same range.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No real question. Thanks for everybody's input on this. I did attend some of these meetings early, early in the development of it, the public hearings and stuff. I guess my only comment is, is this, obviously, this sewer issue was a major issue. This isn't, this is something you were handed when you looked at this, so you didn't have much to say about it. But, you know, this is just stagnating any creative ideas or new developments in the area. And I'm not saying anything that nobody, anybody doesn't know in this room, but, yeah, I think the city's got to take a look, a pretty serious look at this really quick. I mean, just looking at the map, it's roughly a sixth, maybe a fifth of the city that is without any ability to really expand, and...
It includes your high school.
Yeah, well, I'm guessing the high school took the, took most of the excess capacity that was there when they expanded. So, yeah, I mean, this is something obviously we have to look at, and it doesn't pertain to this small area plan, and I'd like to, you know, say you guys did a really nice job on this. So thank you for that.
You know, just a, just a couple of questions around the capacity. So the purple area definitely constrained to be removed in '26, '28, so I think we're going to upgrade our sewer system in the end to help bring some relief in, for those purple areas. The orange areas, when do we think that would be slated for upgrade or development?
So that, that is something that is still to be decided. Right now, there's no plans to do that. So like Zach said, the next comprehensive plan would be when we would have to have a conversation about, you know, the land use within the rest of that area to decide, how are we going to address it? Because engineering has studied it. There's, there's a couple of options, right? Like, one option is we can connect through Minnetonka, potentially. We'd still have to work that out with them, but that would only provide capacity to the parcels within Lincoln-Londonderry, just north of Londonderry. So like, seven parcels. Otherwise, the city would have to upgrade the system ourselves to increase the capacity for that entire area that's in orange. It's much more expensive, but it relieves the constraint for the entire orange area.
So roughly, the process here would be making that decision as a part of the next comp plan, funding, design, construction. It's a long ways off.
Gotcha. So just to tie into what you're saying, Addison, if we wanted to connect into the Minnetonka system, that's not going to relieve all of the orange. That's just going to relieve just the northern part of Lincoln-Londonderry small area plan. So that's just that section.
Correct. And we did, we did, we didn't, this was, this was not a super, super in-depth analysis, but we did look at a very basic level, what level of development would you actually need to have on those parcels in order to offset the cost of connecting to Minnetonka, and for the number of parcels that would be impacted. There just, there really wasn't a level of development that made any, you know, sense. If, you know, you could get United Healthcare to put their headquarters there, maybe, but they're not building that kind of stuff right now. So there just really wasn't an option that, if you're looking at just from a dollars and cents standpoint, for those parcels, it just wasn't there.
Okay. There's a slide with the current state, future state. If you don't mind shifting down here. No, one with an image. Yes, right here. So I could see the top half with the industrial and office in gray. So even those, right, like if I were to repurpose and I come with a paper factory that makes, I don't know, you know, processing paper, and now you have to use more water, that might be something that you can't even do in that area.
The, the cost of the connection would not be offset in the increase in taxes related to really any level of development in that zone, unless you were going 20 stories of fairly expensive residential or something along those lines. It's nothing, nothing that's market-supported that we were able to see would, would offset that cost for that small area. It really, frankly, just, it's going to make more sense as a larger project that's taking in a lot more land and thinking about those opportunities.
Gotcha. So if I wanted to put a building there, like a multi-use building, I have to add a lot more units on it to justify the cost of connecting into the Minnetonka system?
Exactly.
Okay. If you jump to the other slide.
The, this one or the?
The one, yep, this one here.
This one. Okay.
So I see L1 is the mixed-use development as a future state, and L2 is zoned as rezoned for development. Can you just talk more about that L2, and what does that mean? Does it, does it mean rezone for mixed-use development or a certain kind of development? Like, is that like a broad statement, or is that a specific thing?
Yeah. So the L1, the difference between the two, L1 is currently zoned for mixed-use development. So with the exception of the sewage capacity issue, they could do redevelopment there. Because of the sewage capacity issue, they likely wouldn't be able to do residential on that site right now because of the addition to the sewage capacity. So that has been kind of separated out because it's, that's its existing zoning. We just wanted to call out. We're not changing anything related to it, but this, once this is resolved, this is the sort of thing that could happen on here. The L2, the areas that we're talking about in terms of rezoning are currently zoned at a fairly small scale, and the idea would be to move that towards a higher density, probably mixed-use zoning. Though, again, we were a little bit vague about that in the study itself, in case there is, as the code actually gets rewritten, some opportunities to include some light industrial or other uses with a part of that as well. But the idea would be that those would re-zone towards the larger land use guidance that Addison just talked about.
Gotcha. Okay. So if I were to break it down into two parts, just so I could wrap my head around it, if I wanted to put something that's commercially viable in this northern section, in this L2 area, it would have to be a lot of units to offset the cost for connecting into Minnetonka, potentially, because that's a business decision that the owner would have to figure out. Else, I would want to wait till the sewer capacity increases, and then I could afford to connect with a much smaller unit in the future.
Yes, I would say that that is, I, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
To be clear, that connection, though, the city could facilitate that connection for those properties to the north.
Well, sorry, just going back to this, the difference here is, here actually, it's probably easier on this map. So the properties north of Londonderry Road, just, just those, I think it's seven or eight parcels, there is a possibility that those could connect into Minnetonka. That would cost, and I don't want to make up the number right here because I don't remember it off the top of my head, but that costs X million dollars. So for X million dollars, we could do more development on these eight parcels. The amount of money that we could make off of doing the more development on those eight parcels would not pay for that connection. When we talk about the city's connection, we're talking about hundreds, if not thousands, of parcels that have opportunity for redevelopment, and that costs, I'm going to say it's like X plus, or 4X, you know, so it's, the, I'm just going to make up a number right now, and you'll have to, we can get these real numbers for you. But let's say the connection to Minnetonka costs $4 million for just those parcels. The whole thing costs $16 million for everything. So you're offsetting those costs much differently with the much larger sort of area, if that makes sense.
But the city could coordinate that $4 million one, right? It wouldn't have to depend on just an individual.
No, but, but the city would not recap, recoup its costs through tax for doing that, essentially.
I understand. Sometimes it's not just the payback with money. Hennepin County spent $120 million on a library.
Sure.
They're not getting that back. Right?
[inaudible]
So, yeah, there, there's a potential for, the city sees value in like a stopgap measure to, you won't make money off of it or offset it, but it wouldn't necessarily need to hinge on one particular developer to pay for it, or, correct? Like the city...
That is true.
Okay.
There is, there is also with the connection to Minnetonka, and again, there's a longer report on this, but there is some concern about how permanent that would be as well from the Minnetonka side. So just for what that's worth.
There can be some redevelopment. We talked about previously, and that would be, you know, like for like. Not in terms like, fill the amount of, like if there were eight toilets in an existing building, you could build something with eight toilets now. So for example, if someone wanted to purchase a property and put in a use that didn't have a lot of people in it, that could happen. So some development could happen, but...
Yeah. Or, or also, let's, I mean, let's say there are 22 toilets on all eight of these parcels. Someone could knock down all of those buildings and one, build one new building with 22 toilets. You know what I mean? So there are, this is, again, I'm being a little bit facetious with this. It's a little more complicated than that. But it, you could do, there are ways that you could potentially facilitate development. What was, really stood out for me that frankly, I didn't totally understand before this. So the existing industrial properties, for example, a brewery would be allowed by zoning within this area, within those properties. However, because of their water usage, they actually wouldn't be able to get a permit to operate in this area despite it being allowed by zoning, right? So it's important to understand that the sewage capacity kind of, to some extent, kind of overrides the existing zoning, or even whatever zoning we were, you know, if we were to rezone, would change towards. It still has to fit within that existing capacity.
I know I already had my chance, but I had one other thing I meant to mention really quickly. S12, this isn't a question so much as a feedback or a comment. I would have found that section much easier to digest if I could tell what was new and what was already in code. Because I couldn't really tell how, I couldn't really tell the scale or the scope of what was being recommended without knowing what's new, for what it's worth.
Okay. We can definitely take that, that comment into consideration.
Kept turning on and off. The cord was over the light. Anyone else have any questions? Yeah, I guess I just have a couple of comments later. Great work.
Thank you.
Let's turn it over to public hearing. So we'll do it like we did before, since I have the info right in front of me. For those tuning in who'd like to participate, please call the following number, and they'll pop up on the screen, too. 312-535-8110. Enter access code 28610723508. Password 5454. Press star three on your keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak. Hopefully this pops up on the screen. And while we let things catch up for about a minute or so, we'll turn it over to those who might be here in person that would like to testify. You have three minutes to do so. Please come up to either podium, full name, address. Green means go, red means halt.
Right. Elliot Howard, and I live at 4800 West 62nd Street, and it's in the Concord neighborhood. I want to speak like everybody else has so far, in favor of the Lincoln-Londonderry Small Area Plan. My primary connection to the area is cycling. I love the Nine Mile Creek. I ride it, I don't ride it all year round, but I, three seasons a year, I ride, so I ride through that area. And some of the things in the short term that are being proposed, I really feel strongly about, and I'm very glad to see in the, in the recommendations. One has to do with pedestrian and cycle safety going through some intersections. There aren't a lot of them going through there, but there are a couple that can be dicey, and I'm on my own typically, and I see sometimes somebody with a couple of kids, and that can be, I think, a concern. The other thing that I really appreciate is the addition of benches and potential of maybe a meeting space at the trailhead is another opportunity for cycling and enjoying that area more completely. And because I love that Nine Mile Creek Trail, I've come to really appreciate more than before the creek itself and the, the environment around it. And so I want to compliment, too, on the addition of naturalizing the green space and trying to have native plantings to help protect the creek and the, the land around it. I also, the second thing I want to just talk about very briefly is I also participated in some of the community engagement opportunities. I was at the Walnut Park in July, I think, for the bike, bike ride. And also during that time, what I loved was seeing people come together and opportunity for people just, in that very early stage, just put on Post-it notes their ideas, right? It was just a simple way, and it was fun to see people kind of really thinking it through and how things really added, started to add up and pile up on, on that, on that poster board. Furthermore, when going to, I think it was an open house, where used the technology, where people use their phone to let their opinions be known and show up in real time on the screen, was another great opportunity to see what people were thinking. And I love that especially because there are people who don't like to do what I'm doing right now and get up and speak. They don't, people sometimes don't even want to raise their hand, you know, they're just anxious. So that was a way for people to weigh in anonymously, and I'm sure most of the people did do that. So I think, and, and all these great ideas came out, but I think the thing that's exciting tonight is so many of the things I saw on a Post-it note or I heard about months ago are now in the plan. And that speaks to the community involvement. It also speaks to the process that you used, and I know people have referenced that. So the red light is on, it's bedtime. I'll, I think I'll stop there, except to say one more thing, if I could, is that is simply that with the longer range plan, I think small area plans are going to need to be places where there is some consideration for different kinds of housing, maybe mixed income housing, more affordable opportunities, even attainable housing. So I'm excited to think that might be something that comes down the road. So compliments to the community for their input and to the folks that organized all of this work. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, especially for sticking it out with us.
I might leave before the conference.
Yeah, you got it. Go home, in a good way. Anyways, anyone else here for... No, it doesn't look like it. So tune in online. Is anyone in the queue?
Nobody is in the queue. They have to proceed.
All right. Welcome. A motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move. Public hearing's closed. Take it back to the planning commission for just deliberation, comments, feedback, recommendations, or a motion. Yeah, Commissioner Harmon.
It's late, so I won't...
It's late, so I won't belabor my thanks and appreciation and just acknowledgement of the, the great process that you guys set up for the small area plans, for the future. So, great job there. What I'm struggling with and why I won't vote to support this small area plan is because I think we need to go back to the purpose of what is a small area plan. This area of change was identified as far back as 2008. The sewer capacity issue was known and well-understood as far back as 2016. And I take a little bit of grievance with the comment that the purpose of this was because there was no plan, and so we needed to have a small area plan to, to, to discuss it. There is a plan, there's our comp plan. And this small area plan in particular was a reaction to a project that came forth that as a market rate apartment building pre-pandemic, had very favorable support from planning and city council. And post-pandemic, when it came forward as an affordable housing project, we discovered a lot of NIMBYism. And it's really important to have visions and to plan proactively, but this was very much a reaction to something that came before us. And I think it, we're struggling here, and I think the council is struggling, and the public is struggling, with how do we look at things that present themselves that aren't exactly what was there before and/or what the comp plan directs? You know, Kevin Key site, there was all sorts of conversation. Well, it is, it's been zoned for 60 years as, as medium density residential, but nobody really wants that. And so everything that's coming before council is the use of what it is currently, but nobody really wants that either. And it just, it feels like we spend a lot of money to hire great consultants to do these small area plans, but we can't plan when we have a sewer capacity issue. So their, their hands were sort of tied behind their backs in many ways. And, and again, if we are to have a plan and be proactive and be visionary, then we have to be okay if something comes before us and saying no, that it doesn't go with the comp plan? Or having the humility, I guess, to say, that does go with the comp plan and why I might not like it? The people who developed the comp plan, however many years ago, the one that's currently in effect, this was their vision for the city. And when it's time for the next comp plan, I can put forth what my opinion is on what my vision for the city is. And I just think we really need to take a hard look as our, you know, you were talking about the esoteric sort of best use for the library parcel. I really feel strongly that our job here is to think about the best use that addresses land for all of Adana, not vision plans that may not be achievable because of sewer capacity or market conditions or desire for the kind of development we might want. Like, we, we just, I think we got to pick a lane, because it's feeling very hypocritical that we complain about wasteful spending in the city, and then we have a consultant to have a small area plan that isn't planning, it's reactionary, and they can't really plan anything because we have a sewer capacity issue. Like, it, it just is feeling like we're waffling a lot internally as citizens, as planning commission members, as city council, and I just, I'm struggling with it a lot. So, in particular, because of this small area plan and what brought it about, I'm not going to support that it goes forward. I don't want that to be interpreted in any way as a, as a statement against the plan. I thought it was a fabulous plan. I thought your ambiguity intentionally to not lock anything in was great. But if we don't like little zoning variances where we amend the comp plan for one-off cases, the small area plan is amending the comp plan too. And it just, it, I, I think we got to pick a lane. So, that's where I am, but you guys did a great job.
You got any comments coming down, or you want to save them just because you guys worked on it?
Well, I think the only comment, and we've talked about this before, is, you know, this is the public square. This is, you know, Aristotle, this is our, sitting there in the town square and talking to each other about, and not everybody knows everything at the same time. And, and I appreciate everything you, you said about, because I thought the Solheim project was a good project, and I really appreciated what they did. But I think we always have to kind of be in that public square, and we always have to be in that education process. And part of the reason I'm here is to kind of learn more. You know, even though I spent 40 years in the architecture business, spending more time like learning about planning and zoning beyond just kind of residential zoning. So this is a learning process for me, and it's learning about being in these conversations with other people. And I felt like the residents we pulled together and the working group we pulled together were well-connected within the community, and it is about, it is about, about continuing to be in that education space.
Not too much. I, I mean, you know, I guess with the overall commentary about the small area plan process, you know, regardless of where, of how we came to this specific small area plan today, it is where we're at. I mean, can't go backwards in time. I see the small area plan process here and in other locations as a very valuable toolkit, or very valuable tool in our tools, toolkit, to respond to change in our community. The comp plan doesn't go through iterations probably quick enough as we, as we go forward as a community. And so these provide really, I can, hyper-local opportunities for our residents and neighbors to give input on what they want to see, you know, the property next door to their house. And, you know, it's part of a continuous improvement plan, right? So I think it's, the comp plan is one piece of a larger puzzle, an important piece. Obviously, it's not, like I said, it doesn't get updated probably frequently enough, and it probably never will, because our market's changing faster and faster. And this is a way that we can respond to that. Will we get it right every time? Probably not. Will the city follow all of our small area plans all the time? Definitely not. But I think we need to keep engaging in this type of process, really because, you know, it gives, you know, opportunities to our residents to engage beyond the traditional means of planning commission meetings, emails to their city council members, they can come and do an interactive survey, a quiz, right? Putting marbles in a jar and say, I like this idea, biking over with their kids and putting Post-it notes on a board, right? And so there's, this, there's value to this process, and I want to make sure we don't lose that and do the loose side of that.
Yeah, I would agree that there is certainly a value in connecting with the community and having community input, showing that we're responding to their concerns, right? Although I totally get your points as well. My question here would be, if Solheim were to come back today, if this gets approved, and they come back right after that approval with their same development, would it be possible for them to build that same?
No.
Item?
No, they solved the sewer problem. It's not possible because their financing was, it was a funding cycle. They had to give their money back. So they've already spent the, you know, close to probably a million dollars in pre-development costs to get to where they were. They got the 9% tax credits, and then we put a stop on it.
So if I were to frame it this way, if they had their own money, could they build that affordable use, building that they wanted to with this plan that is written today? If they didn't have any money from the city, the city didn't help them, they connected to Minnetoka, does this prevent them from doing that?
No.
Okay. That's all I had.
I would like to express my deep appreciation to everybody that worked on this. I think it was an immense amount of work. And with that, I need to recuse myself because I'm a part owner of a lot of the property in that area. So I'll abstain from the vote. And we're set.
One of the things I really love about this group is that, I mean, I spent actually more time than I care to admit, reading this small area plan over the last few days, and never once did I think of what Commissioner Honneman just said. It never occurred to me. And that's what's so great about this group. We have a lot of different perspectives and different ways of looking at things, and that's wonderful. I want to, I want to congratulate the group and thank the group for the work. I know it's a tremendous amount of work. I support the plan. I feel like, I feel like it's an excellent plan for where we are today, but a lot of the work is still ahead of us, which is, which is fine. We, we do what we can with what we have available today. But I feel like we've, this sounds like a majority of it's not. We kicked the can down the road on a few issues that we're going to have to sort out sooner or later, but we did the best we could today, and that's, and that's fantastic. So, great job to the team, and thanks for, for your support.
Yeah, just reiterate that, kudos to the team. The work on this report was, was fantastic. It's kind of, you know, cart before the horse, or however you want to phrase it. At some point, we got to move forward here, and, I mean, you mentioned, somebody mentioned, I think you did the Kevin Key site. I mean, that's in this orange area too. So I don't know how, you know, that development going from a, however many Zachowak units were in that and what they were going to go to with the restaurant, but that might have been difficult too. So, you know, I, I think the biggest takeaway here is that we need to encourage the city, and obviously, we're going to go through the, the comp plan in a few years and whatnot, but we need to encourage them to move forward on this expansion. I mean, there's a lot of carts out there that aren't, aren't being fulfilled right now, because a lot of residences probably can't, you know, if a whole bunch of people decide to tear down and do, do new homes, you know, they're not going from a one bath to a one bath. I mean, they're going to go to a, a larger facility. So, we're just stagnating a lot of development opportunity, and, you know, folks that want to bring in affordable housing, market rate housing, whatever it might be, we're just not going to be able to do that in this, in this area. And, and again, this area, the gold piece I'm talking about is either a fifth or a sixth of the city, is a pretty big portion of the city, and we just, you know, whether it was neglected or however it happened, we need to get moving on that. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, you got a few comments. Like everyone said, first and foremost, thank you to the team represented by the commission, consultant, and all the residents out there who participated. I've had the honor of serving as a chair to a small area plan, and it's a lot of work, but it's, it's very gratifying to see the community come together, work through the tension of compromise. So it's been interesting to see how that compromise has made its way into the plan, and how it, it seems like the short versus long-term thing kind of documents that to me as well. Regarding process, I echo what Commissioner Honneman mentioned, and just for some context, you know, the, the commission wanted to put on their work plan setting areas of potential change, you know, incorporating this into the mix. The council put that on hold, and then in reaction to this and against our recommendation of not bombarding our work plan, small area plan was added to it. However, once it is added to it, you know, it's, it's our duty to carry that out, and sometimes it's for a good reason, sometimes it's not. The Grandview Development Framework, for instance, was a reaction to the city potentially selling their site and redeveloping it in a non-ideal way. So like, a good reaction to prompt, prompt the brakes. It's referenced, but differently. But for instance, that, that particular thing drummed up support, and so to get everyone together, you know, this is the task, this is what we got to do. Although it wasn't ideal in its origin, the output of it is worthwhile and important. And, I mean, kind of just like the library as I see it, there's some non-ideal aspects, but at some point, it's very evident the ship has sailed, and this is our charge, and I feel like the charge was led well, and there's a great output behind it. Couple of the comments, just from seeing 44th and France Small Area Plan that we approved a long time ago, that I was a part of when I first joined the commission. One thing that I always look to at all of this is the implementation stage and what is comprised in it, because to me, that's the most important part of these. And I've watched 44th and France and other small area plans not really hit their stride or be fulfilled in the way that they could be, because the implementation phase wasn't, let's say prioritized properly. For instance, in, in our, in that plan, the linchpin was kind of a collective parking behind all of the buildings. And it's very complex, challenging to make that happen, but if that doesn't happen, pretty much, most of the plan couldn't happen. And I don't think we could, we didn't emphasize, emphasize that enough. And I looked through here, and I know the sewer capacity is emphasized, but I feel like it should be the first page, the whole page of address sewer capacity exclamation mark, and like, because without that, it's not much of a redevelopment. And at least you have, you're aware of what it could be, but you're leaving so much on the table for so many things down the line. And I think as long as the council's aware of that, and as long as the people who are involved with this stay connected to the city over the next five, 10 years, keep checking on that sewage capacity. It probably took five years for the city to start doing something with the 44th and France Small Area Plan parking situation. So stay on it. We could write it all we want, but it really will rest on the shoulders of people who want to see the plan happen. So, I'm a, I'm totally a fan of how it has all shaken out. I would just say, the implementation is going to be key with this, and the sewage capacity is like the number one focal point, in my opinion, to see this to its fullest. That's all I got. Any other comments? We can't second silence.
Uh, let's see. We're going to go. Here, motion to recommend that the city council authorize staff to submit the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan to the Met Council for review and an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Second.
So roll call, vote.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Padilla?
Abstain.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Felth?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanneman?
Nay.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. So motion carries. This, I guess, congratulations to everyone involved in the process and moving it forward to the Met Council. All right, so. Keep kicking butt, everybody. All right, so now we're on, we're, we're in the final stretch here, home stretch. So chair member comments. I'll kick this off and then open it to others, but as we started the meeting to welcome Commissioner Nelson and with Commissioner Miranda rolling off, Commissioner Miranda, Miranda. Oh, gonna miss him. He served as a vice chair, and I've been thinking about this. So my third term starts, but technically, I filled a vacated term, so I've almost served nine years on the planning commission. And I don't have the intent to serve out as chair till the very end, because I have the opportunity to not have to do that. And I've, I've been a part of other groups where there's a past chair, past president type of role. And as I look to the future here, my plan is to, one year from now, step aside, so then I can kind of keep and keep on and provide some, you know, clarity and wisdom for others. then I can kind of keep and keep on and provide some, you know, clarity and wisdom for others and fill in when needed. But with that, as we think of who to nominate for the vice chair, and then who might come after the vice chair in a year, I put that interest out there for the last three months or so, and there's been two commissioners who've kind of stepped forward, and we've had some conversations and discussions. And out of that, I would, you know, recommend Commissioner Alkire to take the charge as vice chair, knowing that Commissioner Smith was very interested too. But just thinking ahead, as we think of process and transitions, I'd just recommend, you know, a year from now unless something drastic changes, to keep in mind Commissioner Smith for a vice chair when I plan to step back into just a commissioner role. And we can make that motion tonight, as Carrie mentioned, or do we have to, we discuss it and now it's public knowledge and we got to wait?
Yeah, so annually, we have to hold election of officers for chair, vice chair, and secretary. So it wasn't on the agenda. You could add it to the agenda tonight and hold those elections, or we could do it at your next meeting.
When is the, is the next meeting planned, early April?
Yep, March 26th.
Oh, it is March, okay. All right, so just so everyone knows, there's some context to the, I guess, conversations, and I, I just offer right now, if Commissioner Alkire and Commissioner Smith would like to just speak about that, I know we've talked about it, and if you want to just express your interest, then maybe we can make it go smooth next time too.
Sure, just a couple minutes. I mean, I don't, Jimmy and I were talking about this a few days ago. I don't have any particular agenda, which is lucky, because we all share equal influence on the agenda, and in fact, the city council sets the agenda. So that's not, that's not, that's not what I'm interested in. I do have the, it's mostly, as I understand it, Jimmy knows better than I, of course, but it's an organizing and a process facilitation job, and I've got the time and energy and interest and capacity to do it, so I'd love to do it. That's about all there is to it.
Yeah, for me too, it was just really, you know, stepping in and supporting the planning commission. I think the work that we do here is really meaningful and valuable, and I like hanging out with, with you guys. But then when I heard Commissioner Alkire was interested, I was very interested, excited about that, because I think he's great. And so I think he's in a really good spot to be vice chair, and, you know, maybe down the road, we could start looking at, I could start, you know, potentially looking at a vice chair when he becomes chair, if that's still open. But it's really just to support the planning commission. I love the work, I love engaging with residents and the people, and working on projects. So, it's just excitement for the work.
Figure it's worth sharing those conversations, just being transparent about it, because typically it ends where, like, when I'm done with my term, it's like, cut clean, and then, then the handoff happens. So, just want to offer something different out there. Any other chair member comments?
Said, said one thing real quick. Just, I wanted to share my thoughts quick on Commissioner Miranda, because we were talking about that earlier. I figured it'd be better to just wait till the end. You know, I wish he was here tonight, but in his absence, you know, I wanted to say that, you know, that him and I, though we disagreed, and sometimes, you know, and sometimes passionately, that despite those differences that we might have had, you know, outside of meetings, once the meeting ended, he was always very friendly and amicable, and I appreciated that and respected that. And I'll, honestly, I'll miss the opportunities that he gave me to question my line of thinking, maybe not change my mind, but make sure I considered the alternative. And I thought he was a great voice for that, so, yeah.
Thanks for sharing that.
Just a couple points I'd love to share. So just want to plug a couple opportunities if folks are interested. There's the Humphrey Policy Fellows. I'm a alumni of the Humphrey Policy Fellows program. I actually got introduced to that by Kate Agnew, who's on the city council. It's a great program if you're interested in public policy and how it works in city government, and how to build connections across different groups of people. It's a great education opportunity, so I just want to plug that. Applications are open now. It's a, I think it's like a nine-month program. If you're interested, sit in, reach out to me, send me a note, and I can get you guys plugged in. The second point, so next week, Tuesday, I'll be meeting with some residents on Pointe de France, just to share with them what the planning commission does. Folks are just curious about how we operate, how we work. And so I met some really great folks at the City of Edina Town Hall. It was a state-of-the-city event with the mayor and the superintendent, Stacey Stanley. And it was a great meeting, and I met some folks there, and they were just curious about what the commission does. So I'm hopefully going to represent you guys and share the work that we do, and talk about some of the developments happening in the South Lake area as well, and kind of how that came to be. The last item here, and I was just really curious here, but I know whenever, you know, Jimmy talks about, you know, dialing these numbers, he has to call out all these digits. Is there a way that we could make that dialing process easier? I feel like all those numbers are so hard to track, and so if there's just like a phone number and you just press pound and you're in or something, that would be nice. So just make it easier for residents, because I'm wondering if a lot of folks are being bounced back because they have to press so much digits to get in. So, just something for staff to think about, so that folks can join the line a lot easier. That's it.
Quincy, if you need any help or backup or anything for your meeting, let, let us know. That's really awesome you're doing that.
All right, any other chair member comments? I guess I want to say chair, staff?
Nothing from me tonight.
All right, so we have a tradition of the final order of business, and that's adjourned, so it'd be up to you to do the motion.
I move that we adjourn the meeting this evening.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Meeting has been adjourned.